...season, Lord, and it's not more about being celebrated for lights or trees or anything like that, but it's for your precious holy son that you sent away the sins of the world. God, tonight we do pray for this commission, Lord, Lord, that each one, Lord, we know there's been some of them sick, Lord, they have sickness in their family. God, we pray your warning upon them. Lord, we pray for each and every one, Lord. It's maybe standing in trouble tonight, Lord, if we don't know their hearts, God, but we know that you do, Lord, we pray for them, and you judge them. Lord, we know that you're standing on the right hand of power tonight, Lord, make an intercession for each one. Still answering prayer and still working miracles in each one's life. Lord, tonight we pray, Lord, for all of our first responders, Lord, each one that takes part in this county. How did we do it in the wisdom and the knowledge that's led to you, Lord, to pray and seek that? Lord, tonight as we go into this meeting, we pray your blessings upon it. God, we ask these things in thy name. Amen.
Legion Slue pledge. I pledge allegiance to the founding of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I know it's warm here. My alarm, the thermostat was seventy-four. I changed it to sixty. But it's gonna take a little time to cool off. Thanks for your patience. We want to welcome everybody and recognize at this time our elected and appointed officials. If you all could please stand so that we can express our gratitude. I hope you've already viewed the minutes from the November meetings that were in the package. The floor is open for a motion to approve those. Motion made by Todd Snid, seconded by Jason Fawcett. Does anyone see any corrections to that minutes? All right, let's vote on the minutes for November eighteenth. Will anyone?
Yes.
Motion passes. We will now hear the names of those seeking to do his advice this month from the Curts office.
Angela C. Clark, Donald B. Williams, Andrew J. Brady, Stacy S. Jack, Marissa Joyner, Alyssa White, Laura A. Sadler, Rachel Lines, Tammy K. Taylor, Laura A. Rogers, Emily M. Garcia, Kathy G. Ledford, Dewey L. Whaley, Andrew J. Brady, Terry Buckles, Carrie R. Norman, Pega Eppenheimer.
Who's the last one? Last one?
The last one. Here was the late entry. It was an add-on. P-E-G-A-H.
Motion is made by Leslie Hughes to approve all these, seconded by Angie Odom. Donnie K. Willie, you're the chief of All right, let's vote on the under even bond.
Willie Campbell?
Yes, please.
Motion passes to approve those. We go into time for public comments. We invite you in to the podium, just come through the meeting doors and step to the podium. There is a microphone there where you can use it as needed so that everyone can hear you well. You're limited to five minutes. We ask that you state your name and address when you first step up. And as always, I will ask that comments are professional and constructive. Who wants to go first? Charlie Von Cannon, I'll recognize you to come on third.
Charles D. Von Cannon, one ninety-eight Von Cannon Drive, Central Michigan. Hot topic of the day is tourism. Spend the reported two hundred thousand sitting in this account to be used by more tourist activities. How do you get the message out to the world about the beautiful scenery and historic background of this station's history? I understand money came from taxes paid on occupation of two motels, B and Bs, and hostels operated in the county. I agree with the Chamber of Commerce official who said changing the present advertising arrangement is irresponsible. I suggest that it is irresponsible likewise to advertise when the infrastructure of this county is in damage control. It will be at least two years before we're ready for tourists other than rubberneckers to drive in to see the damage. I would suggest light advertisement for the next couple of years unless the Chamber of Commerce has a plan and can sell the plan to the Carter County Commission. If no plan exists, then find someone who can bring results. I would suggest to you, the commissioners, through appropriate committees, develop a five-year plan, developing sites with this money for viewing decks and trails to sites with adequate parking and adequate safe parking. The Laurel Falls attracts many viewers with many viewers that hike from Highway three twenty-one north of Hampton to the falls. The problem is many vehicles have been looted while parked along the highway at that site. I'm told. And I don't know I'm told correctly because I ask the right people. Think out of the box. Several years ago, I toyed with the idea of buying a couple of tour buses, which in the tourism industry are not called buses, they're called motels. I developed three days of sightseeing from the motel. One of the problems was there was no suitable Carter County motel. Some will say these funds are restricted to specific use. You, the Carter County Commission, you're a very capable attorney and you're a very effective county mayor, can get these rules of usage changed during this trying time they were going through. As a person of limited to no experience, I'd be willing to help. Thank you.
Thank you. Whoever's names, just kind of, I won't know everybody's names, so I won't be able to call them, just kind of.
Hello, I'm Kathy Campbell. I live on Blue Hill Seed Hill Road. I'm in District Seven. I've served on the Board of Directors for the Chamber of Commerce for several years. In every board meeting, we receive a report from tourism detailing all the expenditures, which includes advertising, sponsorships, promotions, events. The funds are spent wisely, and we have seen their positive impact in our community. There's no good reason to use another agency. We have local staff who love our town and have a vested interest in our growth and our success. No outside agency will love Carter County like we all love our county. One of the advantages of the Chamber of Commerce and tourism, sharing expenses for the current building, is the wonderful welcome center that we have for tourists. When tourists come and visit, they need guidance on places to eat and stay and activity and points of interest. The Chamber uses the space for local businesses to conduct meetings and training and networking. It's a community resource that will go away if tourism does not stay with the Chamber as the expense for the building would be too great for either one of them independently. Questions I would like for you all to ask yourself before you make this decision. Where will our tourists go to get information when they come here? And who will answer questions from people calling in and coming here to stay? How long will it take you to hire another nonprofit agency to develop a website, visitor planning guides, social media posts, advertisements, and to provide a welcome center? In this critical time, when our community is recovering from the devastating effects of Hailene, can you afford to let our tourism program stall for even a few months while you're looking at other agencies? When the revenue from tourists is so important to our local businesses, our restaurants, and our lodging places? Who will be there this spring and summer to help our local organizations? They depend on us to sponsor and support their festivals, their concerts, and events that attract visitors from all over the region. There are so many ways that our tourism program helps our community that you may not even know about. So I invite each of you, come to the tourism center, get more involved learning about the amazing impact that we have in our community. And we know that our tourism efforts have been successful, and we would ask that you renew the contract. And if you still want to make a change, take, renew this year, this contract, and take the next three years to explore other options. This will give you time to develop a plan to be able to transition without leaving a huge void in our county's tourism outreach at this critical time. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Luke Freeman. I live at seventeen hundred Peyton Drive in Houston City. I'm the Director of Tourism at the Chamber, and I know we've spoken at length over the past couple of months, to you all about the work that we're doing at Carter County Tourism, as well as the positive results we've seen from that work. So I will elaborate on those points. As you vote tonight on whether or not to cancel our contract, I want to try and briefly explain the effect that that would have over the next year. Canceling our contract would mean we would have to put a hold on most of our spending and stop signing contracts immediately. While I know it's been mentioned that the Chamber would be welcome to apply for the contract again, along with any other organizations, the problem with canceling our contract at this point in time is we've already started committing to ad purchases and sponsorships for next year. We can often get a better deal on ads if we're planning to purchase ads in multiple issues if we go ahead and do a contract for the full year. Of course, events are working well in advance to get their sponsorships squared away for next year as well. We also have forty-six thousand dollars in upcoming ARPA grant funds through the state, which could be a loss to the county if produced. Vote to cancel our contract, and we can't be sure that we'll have funding beyond March. We'll be in limbo until you select who to get the contract to, which if that process is run along with the budget, as was mentioned at the workshop last week, I assume it wouldn't be determined until July or next month. We have to seriously cut back on our advertising to ensure that we have enough money to cover the things we've already committed to, which would set us back going into the busiest season for tourism next year. It would throw a wrench in the machine that has been running effectively since 2016, seeing growth in economic impact, lodging tax, and sales tax. While Carter County has many incredible tourism assets, if no one is working to promote them outside of our area, how will anyone know they exist? How will we compete with all the other counties who are spending money on marketing, advertising, and promoting themselves? Doing this just to see what other options are out there would have a clear negative impact. There is no other organization which has worked for the past eight years to promote tourism to Carter County, so any new organization would be starting completely detached. If we aren't funded beyond March, we would have to close our visitor center, shut down the tourcartercounty.com website, and stop distributing our brochures. Tourists would no longer have a resource for finding information about Carter County, either while here or planning their trip beforehand. While I understand the desire to examine other options, this could be done in a way that doesn't create a gap in funding and cause disruption to the work currently being done. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Landon Bill, twelve ninety-one Millican Highway. I really wish I didn't have to be here this evening, just to be frank, but I realize that it is possible for anyone to make a mistake. What's great about local government is that we get to have a conversation together. So I want to tell you all why I am in favor of the Carter County Chamber retaining the contract for tourism. Originally from Green County, that's where I grew up before I married my wife and moved to Carter County. And in the county, they have the Green County Partnership. The model of the Chamber operating tourism looks extremely good. It has returns upon returns upon returns exponentially. When I was a kid, we'd be able to go to the Chamber, and they would have all kinds of tourism resources right inside the door, and I would be able to grab those brochures and of course go home and tell my parents, hey, come and go check out this place. It was always a local place. People think a lot about tourism being something that's always external, but it's not. It impacts the local community as well, and without effective tourism, a local community is going to have impact. There are businesses that are going to close without tourism operating, and there are businesses that are going to struggle without tourism. Specifically with this Chamber of Commerce, the way that they operate tourism is above and beyond other cities in our region. They, for example, during this cleanup phase that we just had and are still going through, they were among some of our first boots on the ground, able to point people in the direction of where to put their dollars and where to volunteer their time in our community. I got a phone call from Mr. Sethe Ice during the phase, he said, hey, we've got some people in Birmingham who don't have the ability to interact right now, they're dead in the water, what can you do to help us? I'm not a professional, so I was able to coordinate with some people I knew, get a Starlink dish, two SEV, and was able to set up a Wi-Fi point for people who had no access to me. Of course, that's all Chamber work, but what's nice about the Chamber operating tourism is that the work that they do supports an effective tourism strategy without the incentive of profit. There, if you, for example, took tourism and bid it out, an outside agency in another state or another county, that agency's incentive is to line their pockets, and the Chamber's incentive is to serve this community. Those dollars go back into the local businesses in this community, and they continue to fund further growth and continue to keep many of our businesses open. A lot of our businesses downtown will be open today without the information efforts and the constant social media advertising from the Chamber. They are very, I am very much in favor of maintaining the tourism contracts, and I'm in favor of most Chambers in our region following the same model. The model has worked extremely well for the Green County Partnership. It has worked extremely well for our county, the Carter County Chamber, and the numbers carried out. This commission has offered solutions for an interim if they do, if they do cancel the contract, and I think you'll have to ask yourselves that question. Would it be a good thing for this community? Or would it be a decision for this community that's reckless? How often that it would be absolutely recklessly leadership if this contract is canceled? Thank you very much for your time.
My name is David Howlett. I live at I can drive, I'm Deputy Chief of West Carter Fire Department. Been asked by the Fire Department Association to come out and speak in favor of you all voting to approve the money for improving the radio system in Carter County. I think there's two lessons that are very easily taken from what we learned after Hailene. First one, I would like to say first and foremost that in our department in this county, numerous of it were out assisting their neighbors and performed a very vital service through that whole storm effort. The second one, I think that anyone who, even if they were driving through Carter County post Hailene, would know is that we have a communications problem. Day to day already, our radio system is inadequate for what we need, not able to have clear transmission on it, and when in an emergency you're having to rely on cell phones to try to communicate with other department members to make things happen, then we learn in Hailene, that all falls apart. So I would like to strongly recommend that all of you vote positive in updating the radio system. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Renee Jones, and I will be representing you in Nashville. And first, I just want to say thank you for all that you have done during this relief effort. This has been a very difficult time for all of us, and I think Carter County has really set the bar high for the way you all have helped your citizens in building back from this horrible disaster. But I wanted to share with you just a couple of things. We're getting ready to head for, head to Nashville in January. The swearing in is January fourteenth, and I will officially be official then, so really looking forward to hitting the ground running and working for you all in the State House. The committees that I have requested to be on is agriculture, of course, I'm a farmer also, agriculture is one of the first committees that I requested, and then commerce, because you know, I truly believe that the small businesses are the backbone of our community. And of course, one of the things that we've seen work here is the way that during the rebuild, we've had to support our small businesses, and tourism has been a big part of that as far as, I think, we, you know, and Nick, you probably know this as well, we've had a lot of farmers show up to help our farmers, and a lot of it's because they've been here before. They've been tourists here, they've camped in the campgrounds, they've been on the lakes, so they knew what a beautiful area we've had, and they wanted to come back because of tourism, that they know this is a beautiful area and they want to see us build it back bigger and better. So I think that tourism is always important, and it's very important right now as we're building back. And you know, one of the things I will say, before I even ran for this position, I like to travel, who doesn't, right? So I would get on a plane and I would pull out that little magazine in Allegiant, and the first thing you see is Explore Carter County. That's something that none of anybody else in this region I've seen has, so I think that's something you all can be proud of. So I just want to say thank you for the job you do. I commend you for, I know you all got lots of hard decisions, and I want to echo on the radio thing, that communication, we talked about that, that's one of the weaknesses that we've had when we debrief on how we handled the flood. That's one of the things that the state's saying, we need better communication, so hopefully there'll be some block grants and stuff to help even improve that more above and beyond what you all are doing. So thank you again for the job you do, and again, please reach out to me anytime I can be of any assistance to you.
Good evening. My name's Ken Mister Lee. I live at one twenty-six Butterfly Lane, and I hope my voice holds out tonight. My name's Ken Mister Lee, and I have lived in Carter County for more than twenty years, but also for the last twenty-five years I've been in the hospitality industry. My careers included hotel management, both sales and management, restaurant management, convention center management, everything from cafes and coffee shops to franchise properties. And most recently, I've joined ETSU as a professor of hospitality and tourism. Now, tourism in Tennessee is the number-two industry, and some would say it may have moved into number-one. Nationally, Tennessee ranks eleventh in tourism. I'm here today to highlight the significant economic impact that tourism has on our county, our region, and the state. In twenty-three, Tennessee welcomed over one hundred and forty-four million visitors. They spent a record thirty-point-six billion dollars. This influx of tourism not only supports our local businesses, but also generates substantial tax revenue, which benefits all of us. Visitor spending in Tennessee generated three-point-two billion in direct state and local tax revenue. Now, in our region, the Northeast Tennessee Tourism Association, for the eight-county area of Northeast Tennessee, that numerous jobs, sorry for the voice again, supported numerous jobs and contributed significantly, specifically in Carter County. In the year 2022, over three-hundred-and-sixty jobs could be tied directly to visitor spending. The jobs are crucial for our community. Tourism generated over one-point-eight million in tax revenue locally. As we look to the future, it's imperative, we need to support and invest in our tourism industry. We have continuity in tourism marketing and messaging, and by doing so, we ensure sustained economic growth, job creation, and enhanced quality of life. Now, many before me have talked about have a plan, don't just cancel it. Continue the contract, develop a plan, look at other options. So I'd like to lend my support to continuing the Carter County Tourism contract and exploring additional plans. Thank you.
I'm Renault Doubley, seventeen-twelve Jackson Terrace, Johnson City, Tennessee. I am the Director and Owner of the Carter County Omni and Bicycle Race, first weekend in June of every year. Prior to nineteen, oh, to nineteen, I guess I'm overly not looking for that. Prior to twenty-one, the Omnium was a Johnson City, that's what it had been for a decade. So in twenty-one, Jordan McCray contacted me and said, what will it take to have this event as a Carter County event? And I said at that time, I need a title sponsor. She was able to come up with one title sponsor. They have already committed to be the title sponsor for twenty-five, and so that's some of the prior commitments they've already made in tourism for next year. What is the impact of this event on Carter County? Well, in order to do that and to keep the sponsors, whether it be tourism, or also in twenty-five will be, Eastman Credit Union is one of my sponsors, in order to keep them aware of the benefit that they are getting out of their sponsorship, we do a survey. Seth Heiss has put together a survey that we do every year to find out what the actual impact is rather than guessing on how things are going. In twenty-two through twenty-four, we've had somewhere between fifteen and twenty-five percent response, so our data is good. And what does that data show us? That shows us in twenty-two, we had only twenty-two room nights here in Carter County as well. We don't have the hotel, but we do have the B and Bs and other places, and Seth Heiss has put together the website that has on the very front page of the website, those accommodations here in Carter County. So what's been the impact over the years is, as our racers has learned that there are places here in Carter County. Well, in twenty-three, it went up from twenty-two to fifty-eight room nights, and in twenty-four, it went up from fifty-eight to eighty-four room nights. What other impact does this event have through tourism to your community? Well, the, also in that survey, we asked, if you were outside the area, how often do you return on non-race weekends? When do you come as a tourist to this area? Well, in twenty-two, forty percent returned for three Well, in '22, 40% returned for 3.05, not just once, but multiple. You know the beauty of the area you have. We make it available and understandable to the racers that come, and I'll give you a little bit of demographic on our racers. You have to be licensed because of the insurance responsibilities and everything to race in a USA cycling sanctioned race. And in order to do that, you have to have a license. Well, what's the demographic of the licensed riders in the United States? Average income of $200,000. That's who we're bringing to the community. And they come back for tourism and spend money. Well, what is the impact? Well, in '22, we had 461 individual visits in addition to the bike race. In '23, we had 518 additional visits in addition to the bike race. And in '24, with things, we were down a little bit, but three or two additional visits from the bike race. Seth in the chamber, Joy recruited it, Seth maintains our website and the advertising that goes for the race, and it has been a very big beneficial to us as an event, but it's been very beneficial to the community that we bring the tourists here.
My name is Sabra Hayden, and I live at 142 Old Buffalo Road over in Elizabethton Estates. My job is a relationship manager, and I'm out working with various chambers of commerce across the region. But prior to my current job, I also did a lot of work in hospitality and entertainment. And I can tell you that your chamber has to be strong, tourism has to be strong. When you get people who come into this community, when I go into communities to try and build relationships, I go to the chamber. And when I was in hospitality and entertainment, we counted on our tourism to bring not just lodging dollars, but restaurant dollars, store dollars. You forget to buy something, you go to your local stores. So keeping your tourism contract with the chamber is absolutely vital, especially when it comes to our community needing to rebuild. We need these tourism dollars to come back into our community and keep our community strong, make it stronger, and help it to thrive. So please do not cancel the tourism contract. Thank you for your time.
David LeBeau, live at 682 Albrecht Road in Elizabethan. I want to thank the commission for the opportunity to speak tonight with the subject of tourism that's important to me and a lot of the county as the revenue is generated from tourism. Those keep county taxes and services low. I've been on the board of the Chamber of Commerce beginning in 2009, holding the office of Treasurer and President during my tenure, and just recently rolled back onto board. Tourism group has been a separate entity from the chamber with revenues and expenses kept separately, yet they share the same facility in Elizabethan and split overhead costs. Tourism has evolved and grown during this time, Luke Freeman as Director, with over a decade of service. He has attended several tourism conferences, both regionally and nationally, to help in his professional growth. Our tourism group has even been recognized in the industry, winning a award for its tourism advertising a few years back. What once had an upper budget of $116,000 back in 2017, has grown tremendously to a budget of $350,000 for our current fiscal year. That is over 150%, increase. One commissioner, I believe, was quoted in the press saying that the tax dollars have grown a great deal the past four years, $243,980. My question is, doesn't that increase in taxes representing and increasing visitors show the success of our tourism group? Yes, it's possible some of the growth is organic, but of all the options across the country that are available to visit, I find it very unlikely to be incidental. We believe that the increase is largely due to the tourism's work in executing its term strategic marketing plan. It includes mix of advertising, premium resurges, promoting our county, and sponsoring local events that attract outside visitors. Another important point is that our tourism group has also begun researching and underwriting grants to require additional funding for tourism. Luke mentioned the $96,000 matching grant that has been earned. If this tourism contract is not renewed, those funds will have to be returned, and those efforts wasted. See, the tourism group is not just settling to be dependent on tax revenue, they are looking actively to take the initiative to seek other funding, stimulate tourism, and an increase, further increase in that advertising dollars. As a former entrepreneur, current businessman, and volunteer on several nonprofit boards for our community, I also know the importance of performing due diligence. Performing due diligence on third-party vendors and outsourced services organizations is a standard business practice, if you are getting the best product, service, or contract for the money. Personally, I've got no problems with the county performing due diligence on the tourism group, seeking alternatives to compare and evaluate best value for the county tax dollars. Unfortunately, it is extremely late in the contract cycle, since there is a 60-day non-renewal notice in the contract. I was told that the committee cannot perform due diligence when the existing contract was in place, that the contract had to be canceled to perform the due diligence. That was confusing, so I hope that the Carter County attorney might be able to clarify that, because again, it is standard practice that every committee should be able to perform due diligence when a contract is in existence. Matter of fact, so that there's no gap in coverage or service, similar to the county's staff or employee medical insurance. Surely, there's no gap in that coverage of insurance, and I doubt that due diligence on that benefit is done after it's canceled. So that's just one example. Thus, by canceling the contract without a plan or immediate replacement, that impacts the advertising momentum already being, the gap in tourism services and grant money to be earned. Thus impacting the business. Our county's still going through this historical damage and individual devastation. It's just really bad timing for this tourism contract renewal issue to come up, and so, especially with so close to the deadline. So I strongly support the renewal of the three-year contract with the tourism group, and hope you all can see tourism's success in bringing additional monies to the community. Thank you for your time. Yes, I'm sorry. Thank you for your time, and appreciate all you do.
My name is Kenny Schlegler, and I live at 605 Holly Lane. I'm here in support of the Carter County Elizabethan Chamber in tourism. My husband and I live in Carter County. I work at a nonprofit that serves Carter County. I own two businesses in Carter County. I'm on two boards within Carter County. And one of our businesses, held under Outfitters, is extremely reliant on tourism. I do that to emphasize how much we love Carter County and how much we want it to succeed. I first wanted to mention the ease of which committee meeting minutes are found for residents. I searched all over the website for updated minutes or even video of past meetings and was unable to find any. I ended up having to look up and reach out to the county clerk's office for them to send those minutes gatebusters. And although they were sent to me promptly, posting publicly encourages transparency or trust for community members. Once I received a draft of the minutes and looked them over, I still have many questions regarding the validity in canceling a contract over the concept of a plan, especially given our region's recent devastation. At a time when our community needs to stay focused on growth, why do you feel the need to cancel a contract with proven miserable positive impact? I have sat next to them at Pinnacle Awards and seen our region recognize them as producing the best print ad, long video, and brochure guide just in the past two years. As a small business owner, why would you risk the well-being of our business at a time when it needs more support than ever? Support it has received time and time again from Chamber Tourism. Following the flooding, they were there alongside those in the most need, making sure they were taken care of. Once those immediate needs were met, they pushed out grants and loan opportunities for those small businesses affected. At the same time, they were partnering with Main Street Elizabethan to launch a new campaign, Local Love, Local Strength, which highlighted those businesses and encouraged safe, responsible tourism. As a nonprofit owner, I would pick out one of our sponsors for our main fundraising event in Carter County. And as a community member, I would pick out one of the top sponsors for our biggest community events like Fourth of July, Cover Bridge Days, and Rhododendron Festival. This is one of the few times I've heard a person possibly losing their job for an idea of something better when they've done nothing but excel. So I encourage you all to consider these points when making your vote today. Thank you.
My name's Peyton Brondas, live at 605 Holly Lane here in Elizabethan. As my wife who just spoke, like she said, we own two businesses here in Elizabethan. We're extremely involved, one of them being Hellbender Outfitters, and then one of them also being a lawn care company. We have contracts with many big commercial properties, and I'm kind of used to having kind of an idea of yearly three-year contracts, and sometimes, they legally are required to have a renewal for their contracts. I just wanted to ask, I haven't heard this yet, is the tourism contract legally needing to have a bid put in on it in the immediate future? So how?
Public comments are not a question answered, Tom. That may be addressed later in the meeting, but not during public comments.
Okay, thank you. That's something that I want to have some consideration, because if I was on, say, having a monthly contract, if our contract was cut short, that would be probably because we're doing something that the company didn't like, and they're going to need to find someone new. In that time being, there's going to need to be grass that's still cut, bushes that still need trimmed, leaves that are still falling, and things that are still happening that, in the time being, if there's no effort being put into maintaining them, it's going to get out of control. The comparison with that analogy I want to make is this tourism department, through the chamber, has made not only Hellbenders possible in the first couple of years, they've been vital to our business's success and still being open at this point in time. I think I can speak for most anyone in this room, if you have interacted or had Joy, Seth, or Luke come to you and say, we need to get this social media put out for your business, we have this in mind, I don't know how many of you have Instagram, but it's been watching there, always putting out social media content. I agree that with the flood that just happened and the devastating impact our community, we do need to have a really delicate and sensitive approach to how we rebuild our community. With that being said, our business doesn't have necessarily two years to just put on pause while we have time to recover. And on top of that, we saw firsthand the chamber was some of the first people putting out information to those that were wanting to visit where there was still safety, where there were places that were not accessible at the moment. To me, it does not make sense to cancel a contract without at least having someone to immediately take over. The, one of the most difficult parts of opening Hellbenders, I don't know if any of you guys have tried to build a website, is really tough, and it takes a lot of time. On top of that, the way Seth has built up the network between local business owners, knowing the local area and the counties, and as well as the whole chamber in itself, and knowing who and how to support the local businesses in this time of need, having a new organization coming in right now, I feel like would be a very, it could be detrimental to seeing how tourism could positively impact our community. We've heard the numbers, we've heard the anecdotes. For me personally, I'm all for, and I think we can all say this together, we want Carter County to recover in the best way possible. I think we're all here to see that happen tonight. We're all for exploring new options, but when we have an extremely, extremely qualified crew that cares deeply and passionately about our community, here, on the ground, doing the work, and having the numbers to prove that it is impacting this community in a positive way, let's renew the contract, we can get a plan, and you can look at other options. But seriously, please consider what that gap and the time is going to cause, what we let the maintenance of tourism and the numbers that it does bring into our community helping to recover, resolve a lot of these issues. Please consider what that would do to our town, our businesses, and our local family members. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Nathan Sutherland, 100 Beale Garland Road. Chamber of Commerce thing, I'm not this big eloquence to be here, but I will tell you this, Joy has been phenomenal in some things that we have going on in this county, which, to give you guys some numbers so you know what you're dealing with, it's, could be around $14 million in taxable revenue and a $1 to $2 million impact on the county directly. There's a development project going on that we look forward to building in the next few years, and Joy in the Chamber of Commerce has just been fantastic at bringing that to town. They've showed us things that we probably wouldn't have seen otherwise. Knowledge and their investment in the county that is here, I can say is none of it that almost feels like family. You know, I don't know you guys' inner workings and exactly what your plan is, but I will say this, where I come from, it's not broken things. That's pretty much what I have to say. I appreciate you guys' time. Can't brag enough on what you already have. Thank you.
My name is Sherry Clavier. I live at 231 Grassy Ridge Road in Elizabethan. If you don't know where that is, it's because it's my driveway, but it is in District Four. I'm here, as well as many others, to speak about the proposed dissolution of our county's tourism contract. I'll be direct, dissolving this contract would be a serious mistake for Carter County. In addition to all of the numbers that folks have given that I won't reiterate here, I will just say that these aren't just numbers. These represent real dollars flowing into our local businesses, supporting jobs for our residents, and funding essential community services. The timing of this proposal in particular is concerning. Our community is still recovering from the effects caused by Hurricane Helene. We have an entire high school that's displaced, many of our residents are still rebuilding their lives, and local businesses are struggling to stay afloat. This is exactly the wrong moment to dismantle a program that brings money into our community. Every month, our tourism program invests money in marketing Carter County as a destination. Its consistent promotion has not only attracted visitors, but has encouraged new residents and businesses to make our community their home. Over the past four years, the program has invested up to $200,000 in community sponsorships, supporting events that make Carter County special and that we all love, from Cover Bridge Days to our Independence Day celebration. What's most troubling is that there's no concrete plan to replace these services. Who will run the visitor center? Who will maintain our tourism website? Who will answer the daily calls from potential visitors and residents? Who will support our local festivals? Who will support our local festivals and events? These aren't hypothetical questions, they need real answers before any change is considered. Ironically, we're facing this proposal just when we have an unprecedented opportunity. With traditional tourist destinations like Asheville, Boone, and Vanarale, facing their own challenges, Carter County could welcome many of their usual visitors, but only if we maintain our marketing presence. In closing, I urge you to protect our community's interests by maintaining this contract. Our tourism program has proven its value since 2016. Now is not the time to create unnecessary uncertainty, it's the time to build on something that works. Thank you for your time.
For those of you that know me, you know I'm troubled. For those of you that don't know me, my name's Chris Little, and I live in Valley Forge. And I'm here to talk about change. We are all used to doing things a certain way. Change is hard. I've been told before, well, we've done that 30 years that way. They were an idiot. Sometimes change is inevitable. I have a medical book from 1900 that says to treat asthma, you blow cigarette smoke into their face. The same book also says for anemia, the use of leeches and bloodletting are permissible. There are times to change, there are times to learn, there are times to do things differently. And no, I'm not here to talk about the Chamber. I'm here to talk about our communication system. People is broke, it don't work, we put this down the road year after year after year. We've had Dexter Lunsford, we've got Chief, and Mike over here now, we've got dead areas in this county that the deputies cannot talk, the constables cannot talk, the fire departments cannot talk, the ambulances cannot talk. Elk Mills has to go through either Carter County or Johnson County. Roan Mountain has to go through Carter County or Avery County. When we have a big fire, how many big fires have we had? I remember North American Rayo, I was down there for three days. Fifty-seven fire departments from across Northeast Tennessee and North Carolina come in, and guess how many could talk to each other? Just the ones from Carter County. We couldn't talk to Solva County, couldn't talk to Johnson County, couldn't talk to Washington County, couldn't talk to Uicourt County, couldn't talk to Green County, couldn't talk to Newport. The radios were different, everybody's radio was different. What happened in Pitcher Ford? Five hundred fire departments away from 200 miles, guess what? They couldn't talk to each other. We've had fires here, that we've had Solva County coming over into Stony Creek, we've had Solva County coming into Hampton, we've had Avery County and Mitchell County coming into North Carolina, we've had Johnson County and Butler coming into Elk Mills and Hampton. We've had departments across the lower end coming into West Carter, Stony Creek, and Weptalk, and we're running down to Greenville and Weptalk and everywhere else. We need a communication system that will work. Is the one that we, we've turned around and voted on the best, probably not, but it's a step in the right direction. We need to move forward on this, we need to get it done, and we need to get a radio system in here before we have tragedy that can be a burden. The money's there, we need to step forward, we need to do it. There are different things that we need to do. When the, in Pitcher Ford, what was the first thing that went out? Cell towers. The fire jump lines burned some waters up, cell towers went out, they couldn't warn the people. When the flood happened in Roan Mountain, what was the first thing that went out? Cell towers and the repeaters and stuff. Why? Because the power lines come down. Do you know what did work? Do you know there are two tornado sirens in this county? Do you know where they are? One in Elizabethan, beside City Fire Hall, where's the other?
Roan Mountain.
Roan Mountain. Thank God somebody up there had foresight to look ahead. Did you know every fire station that we've got in this county, I drove by, did you know they had two-phase and three-phase power, that they could, everyone have electronic siren out there? How many of you turn your phones off in the middle of the night? Do you know when it's beeping and ringing and telling you amber alerts and all this other stuff? I could hear Elizabethan siren in my house, inside my house up in Valley Forge. We need one of those at every single fire station. How many major floods have we had in Carter County since the 1900s? I know four, I forgot the fifth one. We had one that came down through the Elk River that blew out Wilbur Dam, and it did not rain one drop in Carter County. We also had one that came down that went through Black Bottom, and the water was as high as the VFW. We've had the flood in 98, and we just had another one. We're not prepared. Are we getting there? Yes, there's more we need to do, we need to step forward, there's other things we need to look at. And lastly, your fire departments. People Roan Mountain just bought an engine, basic engine, no ladder, no hose, no ads, no air force. Plain Jane truck, $400,000. Two years ago, that truck was $271,000. They can't afford it no more. If you don't know it, but our volunteer fire departments are dead. We've got to start looking at other things that we can do. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lauren Clemson, I live at 106 Will Ox Road in Johnson City in the Seventh District. I'm here with multiple perspectives. First of all, I'm on the board with the Chamber of Commerce of Elizabethan. The reason I joined that board is because in the past few years, I feel like there's been a very good progressive forward momentum in Elizabethan that I've never seen. I'm 41 years old, and I've lived 38 of my years in Carter County because I love it, and I've never seen the growth and momentum that we have in these past few years. And I think our Chamber does a great job, which is why I agreed to volunteer my time with them. But on top of that, I'm a Realtor, and that's where I spend most of my time, other than being a mother. And of the properties I've sold this year, I counted, and if anything, I'm missing any, but I counted 24 properties in Carter County that I've sold just in 2024, and 12 of those were from clients who were out of town. And many of the times that I have these conversations and ask, what brought you here? It revolves somehow around tourism. Either they were, they've come to fish our beautiful Watauga, or they've come here for some event, they've visited family, and they loved what our Chamber has done, because many people go to the Chamber. And I can't tell you a time that I've had a client have a need, have a business have a need, that I haven't been to completely full of faith, direct them, direct them to the Chamber and know that they will be taken care of. I also, in, in a partnership group that owns buildings in downtown Elizabethan, and we heard from Peyton and Kim earlier, we own the building where Hellbenders came from, and I knew how important it was when they came into town for the growth of their business, for the Chamber to take that on, and they did it so well. And I've seen this play out over and over again. We've also owned an Airbnb in Elizabethan, and I reached out to Joy for help with that, and she was happy to do it, and it was because of tourism that we're renting our Airbnb because, like we've talked about, there are not any hotel options. So people rely a lot on Airbnbs, and tourism is the main draw for that. So I come here with a lot of different perspectives. I do agree, and I will reiterate what everyone else has said, I'm a strong believer in if you failed a plan, you failed, you plan to fail. And so without another option in place and a real movement forward, I feel like it's a very reckless decision that we would take this contract out of the Chamber's hands, especially when I'm still very confused about where the negative is currently. I haven't heard a very good argument revolving around why this is even being a thought right now. Now, I do believe in change, I think change is great, and I think that if a county wants to continue moving forward and looking at other things, that we definitely need to look at other options in every regard. However, not only if it ain't broke, don't fix it, but we are thriving, our Chamber is thriving, and they are phenomenal. And I wouldn't be a part of the Chamber, I wouldn't have such a passion for selling homes in Elizabethan if I didn't feel so strongly about what a fantastic job that our community does. So I just ask that you would consider leaving the contract where it is, and again, if we're going to reconsider it years later, there's a plan in place, and we don't just leave it to reckless abandon, that's never a good idea. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Leslie Golden, and at 129 Willstone Drive, Johnson City. I'm the CEO of United Way of East Tennessee Highlands, and our office is at 546 East Elk Avenue. During the last two months, when this disaster hit our community, one of the things we took on was coordinating volunteers. And I, and the only reason I bring that up in this discussion is because there are 4,000 volunteers just came in through United Way that have helped our community. And many of those were connected with us through the Chamber, but 45% of those 4,000 came from out of Northeast Tennessee. So those are different states, different areas in our community, 45% of those were outside of Northeast Tennessee. And many of those commented on the beauty of our area, and we all know that, and many of them will come back, commented that they will come back as tourists when we're ready to receive them. And the Chamber has done that, they're set up to do that, but we need somewhere to receive them, we need avenue for that, and you know, that's almost 2,000 people that could potentially come into our community as a tourist, and we need a place for them to find that information and come back to. And a lot of them are going to come back to the Chamber because that's where they came through to volunteer. So I just support keeping that area with the Chamber because they've done an excellent job already. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lisa Fletcher. I am the proud owner of Fletcher's Homemade. My shop and my address are the same, at 510 East Elk Avenue, Elizabethan. My husband, Albert Allen, also owns small businesses in downtown Elizabethan, Hunter Valley Dragway and Hobbies, 516 East Elk Avenue. And we've heard some big picture reasons the Chamber should be supported, and so I thought we could give another small view of why the Chamber should be supported. Advertising for business, bigger otherwise, is very expensive and takes out a lot of time as far as researching and writing ads, so I do very little advertising just because of the costs and the time. And the Chamber has been so helpful in driving people to us over the years. When somebody comes into my door, one of the first things I ask them is, how did you hear about me? And time and time again, the Chamber. The Chamber sends a lot of business our way. Since I have a cool shop, and that's predominantly female customers, I will have somebody say, oh, my husband's here fishing, and I was like looking at the Chamber, what can I be doing here? They had so many things that, you know, we may stay an extra day, he could do all the fishing he wants, I have plenty to do. So I, I can't say enough about how the Chamber has been helpful in providing assistance with social media, and people calling and saying, what is there to do, and they send them my way. On the few occasions that I, how somebody heard about me, and it is not, you know, the Chamber, they're just driving through, I am sure to say, just down the street, we have a very lovely Chamber of Commerce. They're very welcoming, they have tons of information about things to do. And if you're compensated by another person, it's handy for locals, you're not even from outside of the area, but go in. Sometimes there's things in your own backyard that you weren't aware of, it's free or inexpensive, educational, and historic. So I just want to support our Chamber, they do a fantastic job, and I just, if it's not broke, don't fix it, it's working very well, especially with the bridge down, all of the increased traffic on East Elk Avenue, we need all the help we can get. Traffic is, is actually hurting a lot of different regular customers, but we have the Chamber directing the visitors to us and talking about the parking lots, to help with fighting the traffic. There's good things to say, they do a wonderful job. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Shandry Ashell for Roan Mountain, and I want to start off by saying thank you to so many in this room who both paid and volunteers who have done tremendous work over the past couple of months. In saying that, I want to also commend the Chamber and the staff for what they have done. They have continued to navigate communication, to provide resources, and it has really mattered. I'll also say, I want to throw my support behind communications, that you will also be, I guess, voting on, because I also saw firsthand through the volunteer work that I was doing, how critical communication was. And even in the face of all of the communications going down, there was, there were many people that did a tremendous job, and I just want to say thank you to so many who did that. I actually have spent the last 25 years in communications and marketing, and in doing so, I also served on the Board of Directors and served as Chair for the Chamber of Commerce. I'm a lifelong resident of Roan Mountain, and I know I have frequently heard, but the Chamber and tourism doesn't do anything for Roan Mountain specifically, and that is not true. I have seen such momentum and that moving in the right direction over the last few years. We have a very professional staff within the Chamber and tourism. Seth, I will say, having, having been at Milligan University for a number of years, and Seth as a Milligan alum, he is worth his weight in gold. I have actually taught collegiate law and marketing to understand how to build a marketing plan, to understand how to take photos and video. He is saving this county and this community a ton of money. We are really getting significant ROI from the staff that we have, and I think we not only should commend them, but we should encourage them because, and I'll tell you why it's important. It's important not only in the past, and again, for the relief from taxpayers in particular, because we do have a lot of natural resources. We have things that people want to come to Carter County and see. We also had multiple visitors that turned into volunteers the week of the flood. We had people coming to Roan Mountain State Park to celebrate their anniversary, who stayed and volunteered all week. We had a group that I ended up housing that came from Alabama, and they brought thousands of dollars of fuel and heating sources. They came because they came, and they fell in love with Carter County. Carter County is something that we're all here for, we stay here because we love it. And what a, what a tremendous opportunity we have to share with people outside of our region. And this staff, they're our storytellers. And the people who need communication, our fire department, our sheriff's office, they need our support, they need communication. You all need our support, but we want you to acknowledge just the negative impact, if you were to pull the plug right now on a contract. We need to rebuild, and tourism is such an important piece of the rebuild. We need people coming to visit, we need people to come and love Carter County, and we need people to visit in our community. I appreciate your time, thank you so much.
Good evening, my name is Seth Heiss, part of the Lawrence Seventh District. I am the coordinator for the Elizabethan Carter County Chamber of Commerce. I promise I pay no one to say my name, I've not asked for that. That will lead me into my point is, for all the things we're doing, it is not to have our name be in someone's mouth unless it is in thinking what we can do for them. All the partnerships that we've created through tourism and the Chamber, I think it's important to realize, there are multiple different areas in our community at large, our county, where we have built this relationship, not just since this contract has started, but way before then. And given the time that I've been to Chambers since 2018... been at the Chamber since 2018, it's been amazing to see the growth that we've been able to accomplish together with our community, with tourism and with the Chamber. Some of the recent examples that you've seen, local strengths. After continually it caused devastating damage throughout our community, it was important that we come together and showcase the businesses that wouldn't make it throughout, through the winter without anyone to visit. It was important that we highlight the places that were passable. People that were coming in, we saw volunteer tourism. It's very important that we continue to support that and build the relationships that we have. That is one of the major reasons I believe that we should continue this contract, so that we can continue the momentum that we have and work together as a community. Thank you so much for your time. Thank you.
That was the last one on the line.
Nope, sorry.
My name is Don Lavigne. I live at 175, 725 Baylisle Drive, Baylisle subdivision, Elizabethan. Most of you are aware of my past role as President of Keep Perry County Beautiful. I came tonight to discuss and talk to you about the Chamber and tourism specifically. I want to thank my commissioner, 55, for communicating with me and keeping communication light. Thank you very much. So you get rid of an organization in business because they aren't doing the job. That doesn't describe any American tourism department. Get rid of them because you don't have the money to return on investment. That doesn't describe tourism that the Chamber counters. A return on investment is substantial. You get rid of somebody because, or a department because they're incompetent and they're only a liability. That's not tourism at the Chamber. I have worked as President of Keep Perry County Beautiful with the Tourism Department of the Chamber for the past several years. They're professional. They do an excellent job. They do it as cheaply as possible, but as effectively as possible. And I don't think we should go forward by canceling a contract when we have nothing in place to replace it. Several years ago, I have unique perspective. I was a tourist. In my neighborhood, I have dozens of households. They were tourists. They all came here as tourists. Before I came here, I was a tourist. I moved here because of such a community. First place I visited was the Chamber of Commerce. Saw what was being offered and said, this is the place to live. So several years now, I have been a resident in Texas. I volunteer for Keep Perry County Beautiful, clean up trash, thousands of pounds, all because of the tourism department. Please do not cancel this contract. It's important. I don't know how many of you are residents, lifetime residents. Think about yourself going on vacation and going to another location. How do you pick a location you're going to tour? Be a tourist, visit vacation, marketing, websites, tourism departments, Chamber of Commerce. Do not get rid of something that is functioning so well, to hope and prophesize that you could find something better in the future. That gap in coverage alone would add to that. Please vote not to rescind that contract. Thank you.
May I ask by show of hands, who else is planning to speak?
Take a break.
Yeah, the reason I ask is because we typically have taken a break by now already. Comments have lasted an hour till we get so far. So we are going to need to take a break. We can continue with the public comments and those that raised your hand after the break. You are recessed for 10 minutes.
Hey, everybody. Let's come back to order, please. Let's come back to order, please. Will everyone please be seated? Okay, let's come back to order, please. We will continue with public comments.
Good evening, commissioners. Michael Rice, 242 Cable Hall Road, Elk Mills. This is the report. How would you feel if your mother's home was on fire? And this was the page that came through to the nearest firefighter? Would you be happy if this was the emergency page you received while you weren't working and your home was on fire? Or this one? Or this one? If you're in Pogie, Elk Mills, Roanoke, Shady Valley, this is what happens. These are all real examples of emergency pages going out to our fire departments. I stand before you tonight, not just as a citizen who witnessed and felt firsthand the devastation of Hurricane Helene, but as someone who worked directly with our county EMA leaders to implement the early Starlink Emergency Satellite Communication Systems in the days immediately following the disaster. This experience gave me a front row seat to one of the greatest challenges I've witnessed during a crisis: the total collapse of our public communications system. Many in our community lost their homes and livelihoods, and some suffered the unimaginable loss of loved ones. Our telephone systems were gone, our cellphone systems were gone. These folks had no way to communicate out the devastation that they were facing. Pogie was cut off, Elk Mills was cut off, Roanoke Mountain was cut off. This is the reality of what happened. There was no way to know if our families were safe in some instances for many days. Helene was a wake-up call for all of us. For me, I came to profound realization just how fragile communication infrastructure truly is. Our ability to communicate, essential for coordinating rescue efforts, organizing resources, and simply ensuring the safety of our citizens was completely decimated. And here's the hard truth: if we do not have reliable communications, we are failing our community. We are being disrespectful to our first responders, the brave men and women who run toward danger while others flee. And we are doing a disservice to the citizens, neighbors, and families who count on them to protect them. When emergencies happen, every second counts. Whether it's coordinating rescue efforts, directing evacuations, or simply ensuring that help reaches those in need, communications is the lifeline. As Mr. Little already said, in times of emergencies, departments are unable to seamlessly communicate with one another. This lack of compatibility has caused those precious lives, time that could have saved lives. Our first responders already sacrificed so much. They spent long hours away from their families, they put themselves in harm's way, and bear the emotional weight of their work. They do all of this because they're committed to serving our community. But we cannot ask them to sacrifice any more than they already do. We cannot ask them to work with outdated, unreliable systems that put their lives at risk and the lives of those they serve at greater risk. This is a choice about safety, about preparedness, and about honoring the people who give so much to Carter County. I urge this commission to act decisively and approve the contract for this next-generation emergency radio communication system. Let us learn from the hard lessons of Helene. Let us ensure that we are never again left scrambling to establish basic communications in a crisis. Let us give our first responders and our community the reliable communications they deserve. Stop kicking the can. Vote to accept the new radio system contract tonight. It's time to be decisive. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Ash Disberger, Captain Avenue. I am a small business owner downtown. I have made on up pottery. It's good to see you all again. I was here last month speaking in behalf of tourism and its connection to basically why I'm here tonight. I'm someone who visited our community, that I now say "our" community, you know, just over two years ago. And I have found it to be the place where I couldn't think of living anywhere else, to be honest. So right now, I have a business downtown, and the reason I'm there and the reason I have so much success that I have no doubt is my connection with the Chamber here. They basically have been welcoming that from the beginning and have helped me, you know, along the way in supporting me when what I don't know I need as a new business owner downtown. And I'm in two years now with some, you know, with some success. And I love the home that I'm in, and I think that the relationship of working with them, specifically their staff, importantly, we've had as the biggest benefit. They are ideal. We can work bang for our buck with those people than we could with anyone, I have no doubt. That's a slight bias, but I just know firsthand, working with them as being a visitor, running my business here and feeling I have a success in my business here is all definitely support of our Chamber. So thank you for your time tonight, and just please take all of these voices into consideration because they're all uniquely and very uniquely different than what can be.
I'm Ryan Jeffers. I'm one of the owners of Fromm &amp; Sport Shop in downtown Elizabethan, 441 East Elk Avenue, and also a county resident here in Carter County. Thank you for everything that you do for us. I know it's largely thankless work, and I know that it's hard and time-consuming, and we really appreciate it. I didn't come here to be critical. I came here to learn. While I sat and waited while most other people gave their comments, while I could learn from them and their experiences and their perspectives. And having only the benefit of hearing their side of the story and their concerns and their positions kind of formed my opinion without having the benefit of hearing yours. So just please, you know, pay it with that understanding, and I realize there's probably more to be said. I have yet to hear why the commission doesn't want to renew the contract. I've worked with the Chamber. They helped with our business opening in town. I think the world of them, just as I do of the new views. With that said, they're very open to ideas and feedback, and they often ask for that in the work that they do in our community. So I think that they would probably love to hear some feedback on what you think is working or not working. Some of the data I've seen dates back to 2019, and it shows a lot of growth. And I think that's important because what you can factor in is COVID. For basically, to nobody traveled. We were all stuck in our homes. So then you fast forward to Helene. I'm sure most of the people in this room had to cancel at some point a hotel reservation, a flight, a travel plan. We dropped five hours out of the way to go somewhere that you planned on going because of the road closures and the devastation that happened. And frankly, a lot of us are here tonight not because we're critical or think that there's something wrong with what you're trying to do, but we're scared. Already impacted our businesses downtown and across the county. It's impacted our homes. It's impacted our employees, our friends, our family. And we need to know what the plan is. I'm scared to hire more help right now because I don't know how this is going to affect our retail business. And as somebody who sells a lot of hometown apparel and sells to most of the local schools and youth programs, you know, just like you can go over to Catalon Park and see that there are no softball fields right there. If it happened then for Boyd Sports stepping up and I couldn't rebuild those fields, we might not have a softball season. That's a big hit on my business. Things like tourism really impact every single business, every single employee. And understanding that also not just the business impacts, but the rest of the city impacts. You know, we're smart enough to understand that less houses means less property tax. You know, some of these properties have been completely devalued. They're worthless. Some people have lost their homes and cannot afford a mortgage. They've never paid one. They inherited a home. So a lot of rebuilding is not going to happen. You know, it's unlikely. So we were also going to comment just before Helene of people buying up all the property, buying properties to invest, to flip, to Airbnb. They wanted to bring tourists here. There was space for that, and they were being rented out constantly. That income is growing, and bottling to our local economy. But I mean, of all the people here, I think by a show of hands, for everybody who thinks that this is a bad idea to cancel this contract with no plan in place, did you just raise your hand? I mean, what we lack in quality in these arguments, what you might find fault in for not having all the facts, I think we've made up for in quantity. Everybody here is missing something: time off, they have full-time jobs, part-time jobs, multiple jobs, kids at ball practices, homework that needs to be done, holiday shopping to do. And they've given their evening up to be here and show you how important this is to them. And so I really hope that you'll factor that in. You know, if you basically run a multimillion-dollar business, that's very hard. Most people can't do that and get, you know, 12 people on a board of directors to agree upon things. And here you all sit trying to make sure that all of your community is represented, equally represented, and their needs being met. And I realize that's not easy. But you wouldn't lay off an entire department with no plan on how to replace them. I just, I think that's not feasible. Also, given the time of year, the contract, to my understanding, is set to expire in March. And most of the outdoor events and recreation that takes place are in our better climate months. They still need to get by them in March or April. You know, April, there are going to be a lot more events than there were in January and February. And who's going to host those? Who's going to promote them? Who's going to sponsor them, pay for them? Those are the questions that we have. Our sponsorship's going to be pulled because they don't have faith that something's going to be ready yet. Not just that there might be something better coming, but it's just not ready yet. So, you know, I've heard from a lot of people tonight, and I hope that their individual perspectives are factoring into your decision as you move forward. I'm open to hearing any feedback or other ideas about why it is a good idea. But just for right now, those are my calls. So thank you all for your time.
I'm Anthony Oliver. I live at 405 South Second Street. I operate a business at 411 East Stowe Avenue in Elizabethan, and I'm on board of a nonprofit that operates out of 115 South Saratoga Circle, S. C., in Elizabethan. So I've got a fair amount of skin in the game. So the prospect of putting tourism on hold for a year or two, or not having a tourism agenda, is quite frankly terrifying to me. Because I've got bills to pay right now. My business isn't on hold for a year or two while we figure this out. I've got people to pay, people that live here, and they need that money. Now, the folks over in Johnson City, Kingsport, Bristol, they haven't been affected quite as much. They're not mine to spend. We need that here. But they need to know that we're open for business. The Chambers who tells them we're open for business. Our friends who are still impacted over in western North Carolina, Avery County. They need services that we provide. They need to know that we're open for business. The Chambers who tells them we're open for business. I mean, it's kind of simple. I've been told you don't change horses midstream. You're not even offering me a different horse. You're giving me with no horse midstream bridges. That's kind of an embarrassing predicament to me. So please, I ask you to do better, do right by the people in this county and the people who need the services we provide.
Good evening. I'm Abraham McIntyre from 626 West Maple Street, Johnson City, Tennessee. Thank you for the time and attention you're actually giving to public comment that speaks loudly of this county. A lot of times we take for granted, and it's not until a major, a lot of times we take things for granted, and it's not until a major event happens that we realize that we have what we have right in front of us. Whether that's losing a family member, a friend, a pristine lake dirt and grass in your yard, or a Chamber of Commerce that works tirelessly to bring life, financial support, and positive growth. As a guest, employee, tourist, bike rider, build-rounder, trail builder, and friend of Carter County, I believe from all the amazingly supportive comments tonight that the past two weeks has turned into one of those times. Many of you have taken for granted the Carter County Chamber. This group of passionate, visionary, dedicated, and creative persons have helped Elizabethan and Carter County grow and thrive in the potential that we all know is possible. They have also, most importantly, envisioned, created, and implemented a plan that has an enormously positive impact on our non-his Carter County, and more than Tennessee and western North Carolina. I will share one data point to help back our support for the current contract and plan that is in place and is working. 161% increase. Since 2019, the Chamber helped increase the hotel motel tax dollars by 161%. Speaking to any economic development or tourism expert, heads and beds is will always be one of the first data points that they request. So 161% increase. Please keep that in mind when you vote to support the Chamber of Commerce.
If I was going to speak, I thought I would. And I've got a bunch of notes about statistics and data. I'm not going to tell you any of that. I'm going to tell you some more about myself. You guys don't know anything about me. I'm Joy McRae. I'm the executive director of the Elizabethan Chamber of Commerce. 11709 Carter Boulevard, and I'm a seventh-generation Carter Countyan. My great-grandparents lived in Fish Springs. My whole family's from Hampton. Their house is one of the houses that got moved from Old Butler to New Butler. And you can see where it just shifted right off the foundation just a little bit. My great-aunt, her name's Kathleen Smith, she's owned Little Milligan for 30-plus years. My grandfather, when he came back from the war, he was one of the grave diggers that dug graves that moved them from Old Butler to New Butler. So my roots run real deep in Carter County. One thing you probably don't know about me is I have four dogs. Four dogs. Pray for me, four dogs. And we spend all summer out of the lake, at Pataga Lake, and I spend a lot of times, I get FaceTime with tourists all the time. It is not uncommon that I roll up to Lakeshore Marina and somebody's boat is drifting away because they don't know how to do a cleat, or somebody's boat is about to crash into the marina because they don't know how to pull it and get gas. And I'm always happy to pitch in and help them pull it correctly. And the very first thing I ask them is, "Where are y'all from?" And most of the time, they say, "Oh, we're from somewhere, Indiana, Alabama. I met somebody last week from Wyoming." How did they find out about us, right? It's usually because their husband or their wife is a fishing aficionado, or they're into the outdoors, they're doing the outdoor rack, or they hike, or they bike, and they've been here and they've heard about us, right? And they're always surprised when they roll into the visitor's center and then they see me, not in my shorts and my swimsuit. They're like, "Oh, did we just..." They're like, "I worked here too," right? And we help them plan the rest of their really great vacation. A lot of times, visitors come in and they're in distress. They've had a flat tire, broken an ankle, they've had something happen. Y'all can get sick on vacation if you weren't sure. It absolutely happens. We see it every day. And we help them get into the first assist or help them find a mechanic, help them find another day to stay somewhere. It's not uncommon at all that we pick up the phone and call our friends at Meredith Valley, or call our friends at Beak Cliff, or call our friends at Roanoke Mountain at the state park and say, "Hey, do you got room for one more night? I got some friends down here that just need to stay" to kind of put their lives back together. I had one lady that came through. She was a young lady. And she was coming from Arizona all the way to the east coast, and she stopped to check with her internet, and she brought her elderly dog with her. And she, we talked for a little while, and the next day, she called at eight o'clock on the dot. And I knew it was time. It was time for her dog to get put down, so I called her. But I went with her because I didn't want her to go by herself. So when you talk about what other options there are, what other people there are, what other agency there may be, there is no one who cares more about our family than we do, the Chamber. You know, I've been overwhelmed, as all you have been, the last couple of weeks from the hurricane. But one thing that I've seen, and more touching to me than anything else, is to hear from so many people who have called to check on us because they've visited us and they've been guests in our community. They've called, they've made donations, they've shipped can openers, they've shipped gas cans, they've shipped everything. And so many of them, in the weeks that followed, they showed up and they didn't bring their camping gear. They brought their chainsaws, and they brought cases of water. And they didn't show up and stay on vacation when they could have. They rolled up their sleeves and they rolled right into town with us and they got to work. And they said, "We can't wait to see you in the spring. We can't wait to come back with our family. We can't wait to see what you guys have rebuilt." So when I say, "I'm really curious to see what happens next," because how are they going to find out about us? We're not like Asheville. We're not on the way to anywhere. We're not like Gatlinburg. We don't have a destination attraction. The only way they find out about us is word of mouth and through tourism advertising. Of course, I urge you to not cancel this contract because we want to see all of our guests come back here. We want to see new guests come in town and make memories with their families and friends. And we have three or four years to come in, and it's all that we love about Carter.
Is there anybody else?
Good evening. My name is George Glenn, 11726 Silver Hill Road here in Elizabethan, and I promise you I will be brief. I'm both a downtown property owner and an Airbnb property owner in Pataga Lake. Obviously, some commissioners here aren't happy with the present direction of the Chamber, or wouldn't be here. I think we would all agree we want the Chamber to lead us in the future for tourism. I oppose the following to be considered: that if the contract is canceled, the Chamber continues... That if the contract is canceled, the Chamber continues at the same rate with a 30-day or quarterly notification, the deal would be, if this commission holds the contract. You know, I just think that would be a better way than probably cold or not. I know a decision has to be made because there's a very limited window on the contract in which you guys can cancel it. That's all I've got to say. Have a good evening.
Well, on the way, if there's no one else coming forward for public comments, we're going to close that part of our meeting. Okay, public comments are closed for tonight. Thank you all. Though it has lasted a long time, many people have spoken and many people have not been in the four, five minutes. And so, I just want to express gratitude for that, and I also want to express gratitude to the Commission for staying attentive and letting us here for my constituents this entire time. It is now time for the Finance Director Report by Carolyn Watson.
All the financial reports are in your packets. Also, please pay attention to report to our Budget Committee and the Financial Management Committee. If you have any questions or concerns, feel free to email or call me.
Thank you.
I want to say thank you to everybody that is sitting in this room to just thank you for meeting with the local government. I wish we could see more of this turnout at our monthly meetings because there are so many decisions being made, and local government affects you the most. Local government decisions affect you the most, so I would really applaud each one of you and ask that you be more engaged with us. We welcome it. First of all, I'm going to do a proclamation for Human Trafficking Prevention Month. I'll go ahead and read it so we can get it into the minutes. Human Trafficking Prevention Month and Day, January 2025. Whereas human trafficking occurs when a person is recruited, encased, harbored, transported, provided, purchased, or obtained through force, fraud, or coercion for the purpose of performing labor or providing services, labor trafficking, or engaging in commercial sex trafficking. Whereas it is estimated that approximately 27.6 million people are trafficked around the world and as many as 2,100 in east Tennessee alone. Whereas human trafficking erodes personal safety, dignity, and liberty, as well as health and safety of communities at large. Whereas human trafficking does not discriminate based on age, sex, race, color, or national origin, but is however grounded in the inequitable conditions of relationships in society and disproportionately affects vulnerable individuals and marginalized communities. Whereas the need is great to remove the veil of secrecy that allows human trafficking to thrive, disrupt the systems it depends upon to flourish, and mobilize community support around survivors of human trafficking, and help them as they seek to recover and rebuild their lives. Whereas a unified response by allied professionals, law enforcement, prosecutor, judges, victim service providers, healthcare professionals, volunteers, and others in need of provide safety, justice, and healing to survivors, hold offenders accountable, and promote the welfare of the community. Whereas the Tennessee Counter Trafficking Alliance through the Community Coalition Against Human Trafficking in East Tennessee exists to educate Tennesseans about the realities, the pervasiveness of human trafficking, foster collaborative prevention efforts, provide comprehensive, trauma-informed after-care services to survivors, and advocate for more proactive legislation. Whereas during Human Trafficking Prevention Month and throughout the year, Carter County is provided an opportunity to celebrate the collaboration and work that has been done while re-dedicating ourselves to all that is still left to do, to reflect upon and honor the resilience, perseverance, and courage of survivors, and to urge everyone to recognize that we all have an active part to play in protecting the most vulnerable in our communities and ensuring survivors receive the care, support, and services they need. Now therefore, be it resolved that Patty Woodby, Mayor of Carter County, Tennessee, does hereby proclaim January 2025 as Human Trafficking Prevention Month and January 11, 2025 as Human Trafficking Awareness Day, aligning with the state of Tennessee and the rest of the nation, and renewing our pledge to remember victims and survivors of human trafficking, and in reaffirming our commitment to end their exploitation in communities across Carter County. And what I'll just do is, I'm just going to do a little update on the recovery effort, on the debris removal, just to kind of give you guys an idea of where we're at. Just, I know we're still doing our weekly email updates, but this will kind of recap where we're at. So, we're 77 days into the effort since Helene hit, so we're in 77 days. Right now, on the debris side of the house, we have complete on the rightaways, and we expect to have all that completed by January 25. We have cleaned up 30,000 cubic yards of debris as of right now, and that's just in the rightaways. There is still 60,000 cubic yards in the rivers and streams. There's 120,000 cubic yards in Otoga Lake. So, that gives you an idea where the debris is. And the rivers and streams in Otoga Lake have not been moved to start cleaning up yet. We're still working with that with the state of Tennessee. There's a lot that has to be done there. But our county rightaways and our county roads are 80% completed, so that debris, the debris removal is going really with the company that we contracted, which we're keeping an eye on daily, so we're keeping, making sure. On the bridges, I'll need to read this into the minutes, too, so we have, since this was in an emergency bid process on the engineering for the bridges, so I'll just read it so you guys can put it in the minutes. Please be advised, a decision was made regarding the engineering services for Pogie Bridge number one and Pogie Bridge number three. RKNK has been awarded the bid on these two projects. Engineering bid award for Long Hollow Bridge is on hold, awaiting bridge reinspection from TDOT. Long Hollow may not need a complete replacement. We're going to have that inspected again. It may just have to be like a small rebuild to it, so we're having TDOT look at that again. But both Pogie Bridges are a complete replacement. So, those bids, those contracts for engineering services have been awarded, and let's see, bridges, and we're expecting the engineering will not be completed until August of 2025. And that's just the engineering piece for the two bridges in Pogie. So, that'll give you an idea of where we're at on the engineering. Roads in Carter County, we have 60 damaged roads, 158 sites. Of course, I've went over the bridges, two rebuilt bridges, one bridge pending TDOT. And we requested $4 million from the Heal program for debris. Right now, we've paid $2 million out on the debris, and I just approved another purchase order for half a million on the debris monitoring. So, we're moving that money pretty quickly. The Heal program had $100 million in it. A lot of that money was not requested, so there's $34 million left in that program I requested from the governor. He upfronted us 20 more million. That will take care of all of the engineering costs, the bridge rebuilds, and getting our roads back in place so that Carter County does not have to upfront those funds because we've not afforded. And it looks like we are, there's $34 million left, and we've requested 20 million of it, so it's par for the course for us. But it looks very positive for us, and as the team at Director told me, the early bird gets the worm, and we've got ours in. So, that gives you an idea. We're working hard daily out of the EOC to make sure Carter County does not have to give it to its fund balance and can reimburse this money that we're going to have to pay. Buildings. Carter County has 15 buildings that are damaged and are under insurance review, whether it be minor or major, whether it be a shingle was blown off the roof, the landfill, the annex has some water damage, the planning building has a little bit of damage. There are several different buildings in the county that are being under insurance review. We've got 15. And then on the school side of the house, they've probably got 20 plus. So, there's minor and major damage to our buildings, but it's all under insurance review, and we are monitoring it as they review it. Parks, all the debris has been removed from all of our parks, which is mostly in Run Mountain and Green Bridge Landing and Happy Trails we're working on. We're working on Happy Trails today. The debris company was, ended up there today, so that's kind of, that's kind of an update on just the status of debris, and then we'll be doing some drone footage this week thanks to the Sheriff's Department allowance to use their drones to get footage of the debris, the locations, because that's a piece that FEMA needs for us to get in on this extra money that we're requesting. So, we hope to start doing that at the end of the week, weather permitting. I think that's kind of all I've got. Does any, do you guys have any questions? I know we're still working diligently. There's still a lot of needs. There's still a lot of damage, and it's just going to take time. The projected amount here, amount of recovery for Carter County is five years. So, and you know, we're only 77 days in, and that is from FEMA and FEMA looking at all of our damage, and so we're five years out seeing somewhat of a recovery. So, a lot of us are still working long hours. A lot of us are working 10- and 12-hour days, too. So, just because you're not seeing us, I know we're, don't think that we're not working from the Finance Department, to the Highway Department, to the Sheriff's Department. You've got some great work, and bragging up from the directors to the office holders to the county employees. I'm super proud of them, and I'm proud to be a part of the team that's leading this recovery. So, with that being said, I just want to take a moment to say thank you to the County Commission for all you have done. It's been tough. It's going to get tougher, and thanks for supporting me and some of these decisions that I'm having to make under this emergency declaration. Thank you to all my elected officials, Shannon and the sheriff back there, all the directors in the county that are playing a role here, the animal shelter, all my directors who have played a vital role in helping Carter County. It's a lot of teamwork, and I've been seeing some great things come out of our county. County employees, and I especially want to say thank you to all the first responders. Let me tell you something. I've worked hand-in-hand with the first responders in the early days of this event. It's the best of the best. Proudly. They saved our county. About the people coming in to help, we needed them, but it was about the people that were already here, and I appreciate everyone of you so much. So, I think that's all I've got, and just cause, Avery?
Well, you may not be able to answer this question. Have you heard anything about being able to clean up the river? And the reason I ask is because the rain we had two nights ago or three nights ago, the river was out of the banks to get by.
Yeah, so you're exactly right. And so, what's happening is the state is going to take that on, minus NRCS. NRCS is already going to clean the most immediate areas of the rivers, which has to contain structure nearby, and that's only a small amount of footage. I think, what was it, 1,000, how many footage was it on yet?
1,000 feet.
1,000 feet, and the rest of that is going to be for TDOT, and they're going to contract that out because right now, if we start cleaning it up, we could lose the opportunity to be reimbursed. And so much permitting. You mess with the salamanders, you can't, there's a lot of things that we have to abide by, and that's why this process is going to take so long. Otoga Lake, now, as soon as they're finished with Douglas Lake, Otoga Lake is next, and it will be cleaned up by FEMA and TBA. They will take on that and clean Otoga Lake up. Like I said, it's kind of a lot of...
It's the dough whooping burp that comes out of the face of the road.
Yeah, and...
We didn't have two inches of rain each other.
Well, and it's no secret, we are literally a teacup away, a teacup of water away from another disaster in Carter County. We're very vulnerable. The infrastructure is very vulnerable. We're consistently looking at Elk Mills, Pogie, Run Mountain. We're consistently looking at those areas. Two of the large concerns now are the two bridges that are in Pogie. We're just now trying to do a contract to get what I would say, two permanent bridges, but temporary for two years because with the bridges that are there, we cannot get first responders across them. We can't get fire trucks, snowplows, and we cannot get ambulances across those. So, the bridges we found, or it's what North Carolina TDOT's using, and we're going to bring them in, they're going to put them in for us, do all those things, and help us carve the banks out more so our trucks and first responders can get in and out of there a lot better. You have to remember that Dr. Carpenter is also busing our kids on vans into another state back around, so by no means are we out of the clear on a lot of things. There's a lot of things that are very concerning. We're consistently keeping an eye on, and you know, we're 77 days into this, and we've got a long road. So, I just ask for patience, and if you've got questions and you need me for anything, I think Jason and most, you know, to call me. I mean, I don't have the answer. I'll find it if you've got constituents who need something. One other reminder, individual assistance is ending January 7. So, anybody, any of your constituents who have not applied for any type of assistance, we've got to do it now. The DRC removed to the library, so they're there now, but once January 7 deadline hits, that's no longer here. That's gone. You can't apply for anything else. We've got citizens, especially in Run Mountain and Pogie maybe, who have lost private bridges. If you know somebody who's lost a private bridge, FEMA has now put into place that they will give money to replace that private bridge that wasn't there before, that they will. So, if you've got citizens or constituents, they've got to apply for individual assistance. We, as the county, cannot do that for them. I mean, we're literally taking light talks to people, going out and getting people registered. But if they, we don't know, or they don't know, they need to, it's a come up on us to get them the information. But the individual assistance is over with January 7. No more aid can be applied for. So, especially Run Mountain, especially Pogie, Elk Mills, those areas, Hampton Valley Forge. We've got citizens who have not applied or are concerned about applying. They really need to apply because FEMA has done and allocated. They have already dealt out $4 million into Carter County. Carter County alone has been distributed $4 million. So, they're doing things that are out of the ordinary, so we really need to get them to apply. It's a real big concern of mine. I look at the numbers, a lot of people haven't applied for individual assistance. The FEMA temporary housing is getting ready to move in. We've only had six residents apply and qualify for temporary housing. We have 677 homes in Carter County that have major remainder damage, and inside of that 674 homes are completely destroyed, wiped away. So, six individuals, about six families have only applied for FEMA assistance, for temporary housing. So, I just really need you all to help me get this information out there to them. It's slowly going to start ending, and as you know, the administration changes over January, so there'll be some changes, too. But if you need anything, email me, ask me, call me, whatever. I'm a resource. My world is FEMA and FEMA now. That's all I'm getting done, and that's just where my focus is right now. I put everything else on hold, as I told the Joint Economic Community Development Board. I won't get upset. I'm being a visionary for Carter County, and it has been my goal to bring in new and great things for Carter County. And it's hurt me more than ever to stop those projects, to get back what we lost. I intend to do that.
Thank you, Mayor. Mark Rides, and any representatives from Watercolor and Tackin may come forward now.
I guess we all know why we're here about the latest order in the contract so that we can get moving forward with shifting the proposal and getting the system launched and being able to utilize the funding that we have at this point. Okay, there's some promises on the horizon for White Rock. I do not have an approval, but I've been assured that it likely don't happen. There are some things that are working in background that I'm actually working on some agreements with them, so it's possible that we're working towards that agreement. So, I feel confident that within about 60 to 90 days, we're going to actually have the approval from the White Rock side to start construction on that. I think that everyone has a copy of the proposal. I didn't know if anyone had any questions.
Director, I have some more. Without White Rock, they had Tackin almost out. Is that correct?
It will take out, what I've been told about Tackin is if we do not have the White Rock side and we do not secure that White Rock side for this project, they're going to pull out their $1 million on the project, and that will also take out that site, which may affect also Avery.
But in essence, that affects about a fourth of our county in communication. So, that means that we did have Tackin in, it is under our, without White Rock, that means that our vehicles, our Mercedes-Benz, will have to have two vehicles in there to be able to have effective communication.
Is that a curious thing?
The other, just like right now, it is unsure of the White Rock approval through the U.S. Forestry, and that means a great lot of work has to be done. If it is not approved, we basically have to use the same existing system we have, with the exception that we renew it because what we have, our equipment is old, and then we may have to place a couple of power... And then we may have to place a couple of powers in certain places in the to increase or to decrease our dead spots. And to get better coverage, is that not true?
That's true.
Okay, we've known that now, you've, before this commission, you've told us it's coming, it's coming, it's coming, six months. Now you're saying it's going to be another three months before, maybe six before that happens. If the White Rock carries, that means this proposal is basically worthless. Matter of fact, it is not right now because it's to execute the total contract and we got a missing part. Is that not correct?
We'll have a missing part if we do not get the, with the Forest Service.
That's correct, it's completed. You know, it's, I'd say delayed, but it's not bad, you know, we're going to have, we're going to have the approvals. And then in the content of this proposal, there is the scope of work. Identified by Mo Road Solutions. And if you look in the package that you have, along with our holy dead, there's three columns. One is the column of what Motorola or the board is well written. The second column is what is responsibility of this county. One thing that has not ever been mentioned on this floor or a price tag on it. And that includes building buildings, digging holes, building roads, and it all sort of has to be done before Mo Road is committed to their job. Because that's why in this review is the assumptions. And I believe everybody in the company knows what it is when you assume, you know, what it does to you. But that's where we're at right now, so how can they ask to sign a contract? And we don't have the site approvals or the other work that have been priced before we went on a contract completed to where they're able to do their job.
So the building is covered, so Tackin's actually covering all of that, I believe.
But well, the 25.
So I think the biggest responsibility to the county that we talked about initially, I think going back to 22 is the road, you mentioned that, so.
Well, it involves the road, electrical, the fiber. And the road is where that has to be, that has to be a white rock, so if that goes away, basically, you know, that's up to the community. But you'd have to about 244 where that contract would be void if you don't, because it's going to be rewritten. Reconfigured engineering wise in the communication field, correct?
Are we talking about the road, if something needed to be changed on that or?
If the White Rock does not appear, that means we're going to have to change systems.
Well, Tackin is still existing in the county today, sorry. I know, I believe somebody from 911 or EMA, there were several first responders took some radios out a while back. So there is existing network today. I think the question is, White Rock provides you guys blanket coverage that that you guys, that's the ideal situation. That's, that's why we've been talking about trying to work through forestry, Motorola and everything we have on, on our end to push that along. White Rock's your best coverage, you know, there could be other options, you know, we can always look at down the road, but that's your best bang for your buck.
What that does is create a change order.
It would be, yeah, if we have to change anything on it.
Unbelievable high. Because you're changing the way the system was originally designed.
What was the latest conversation you had with Forestry?
The latest that conversation I had with Forestry was actually from the current district ranger. Basically what's occurring right now, we found out back about a year and a half ago, if you might recall this, that that site was not being a communication site within Forestry. Well, I've come to find out, they did not forward that information to the current district ranger, who found out about it just recently. And that's what spurred the 60 to 90 day delay. Most likely would have had already had an approval that had waited for that change, for them to change that site. Wilderness site up to a communication site. And that lack of communications within, within the Forest Service is what caused that delay. And he has told me that that is what they're moving on right now, before they can move forward. And with that approval, or I'm sorry, with that change in there, then most likely it's possible that we're going to have a.
Hopefully it won't take another year. It's in my district and that site has been there for 25 years that I know of.
I will say Tackin is very committed, Motorola, everybody's working this from every angle to speed it up than we've been able to. All indications are positive.
Okay, Jerick, another question.
My question is to whoever would like to answer it, if it's someone in this room, great. If it's somebody outside this room that's watching, that's great too. Where is our state and federal legislature at that's not intervening in making this thing happen? This is not a surprise, it just popped up in the last few months. We've known this now for over two years. Why has this not been pushed through by our legislature body? Certainly as easy as it can be done, more sites than one just proved that.
I think the biggest, I mean, this is a federal, federal land, so.
It's federal land and Forest Service is one of these immovable federal agencies. And the only ones worse are the DOD and the National Park Service. That, that kind of a change affected from a senator or representative delegate would, would. I don't know if it would have done us any good to start pushing it earlier than we did or not. We were pushing about as hard as we could before they turned us into a problem child and told us no. I'm not 100% sure that that would have worked, and I'm not 100% sure it wouldn't have either.
Our current situation, don't wake somebody up, I'm not sure they can be woke good.
They have been trying to do what they can from that end of things. We've had some, some push with the Forest Service from our delegates and they have actually had contact with them. And in our defense, they have actually told Forest Service they would like to move it because of what happened over, you know, in September and October. And because of all the flooding and the down, outage of the communication system without the White Rock there.
Because with the current system, it's just a miracle we didn't see loss of life during the flood. No doubt, it's a miracle. And a lot of it has to do with the quick action of our first responders. And they were just a hair away from not getting the response needed. Somebody somewhere needs to open their eyes and say, wait a minute, this is a dire situation, needs to be addressed. Right along with the flooding in those districts. That's my opinion. Are you?
Leslie.
I was just going to answer Todd's question. We have been in contact with Senator Blackburn multiple times and some, several of her representatives. Probably what, last two weeks, I believe, we had a conversation. And speaking with someone, another lobbyist who specializes in the Forest Service. And they have been pushing this as much as they can at this point as well, trying to find out what, where the delay is. They're very frustrated with it as well. Todd, I've got the numbers if you would like that, if you want to contact any of them.
I am curious, who is, you said we have been in contact, who's we?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mark was in the meeting, Mark Riddings, County Mayor was, this was the last one that we had. And Michael Hensley, he's with the Senator Blackburn's office. That was the last one that we had just a couple of weeks ago.
I would love that information, so as soon as we get there and I'd be happy to text.
Eric Frazier.
So let me see if I understand this correctly. They have a communications site listed as a wilderness site or a fire tower site. And we're trying to get them to change it because they didn't know a communications tower has been sitting there for how many decades?
At least two, probably three.
Okay, so.
They did not know that in DC.
Okay, so let's, I'm going to play devil's advocate for one moment. What if they decide not to reclassify and tell us to move our radio equipment?
We'd have to look for another site, find another site somewhere else that would be suitable to put the equipment on.
And so we've got another 90 days in the worst case scenario for them to say that might be the eventuality because we're only just waiting for the approval to switch that over and then the rest of, of what's going on. So we were basically at the 11th hour and they're like, whoops, we put the wrong code in the box. So let me, changing, changing tack for one second. Is it December this year the deadline for having the funds for this designated or is it next December?
It's not this December.
Doesn't have a date.
What, what is the deadline?
We already have the purchase order in place for the designation.
So the PO is already in place, we're covered on that deadline essentially right now.
I don't know if there's anything left to say except for holy crap.
In the absence of questions, gentlemen, I believe you are free to sit down. Thank you.
Mark, have you got a Plan B site? We don't currently have a Plan B site, but we've been looking for sites. One of our biggest challenges is Forest Service owns 70% of our county. So if we moved another site that I can deem that would take off work is.
I have to start the whole.
There may be a private site here or there that we could put something on, but it won't be an effective tower site because we won't be able to load it like the equipment needs and we won't be able to hide that evidence absolutely.
Do you want a cell tower? If you want to put it on there, please do.
A cell tower is over 180 feet tall and we can be at the top. Cell towers will not let you be at the top because that's where they have their population and their ratings. Don't know that we can do that. I'm not going to say no, but I'm going to say unlikely, but we can always ask.
Always have the option to sign that two lines side by side. Just have to be deemed.
Three minutes ahead of that.
Good numbers.
May I jump in also here? This project started before I came on board with Motorola, so they started sometime in 22 and I started January 23. We were able to hold the pricing as is, like it was in 22, to get it currently now. So there's still in that pricing, there's still incentives for I think $1.2 million that the price should have increased. We were able to, to fight internally to get those costs averted because of the extenuating circumstances going on with, with the Forestry. This system not only affects Carter County and hopefully we can give the first responders in the county what they need to do their jobs appropriately. But it also affects City of Elizabeth and Johnson County, this and somebody.
Avery.
And Sullivan, and Sullivan County.
And you've got the surrounding trial cities that are currently on Tackin, which is one of the advantages of being on that system.
So what they were talking about earlier without not being able to communicate as often as they look to during the unfortunate circumstances. This network gives the people, you get mutual aid from Sullivan County, from Carter County, or from many of the other adjoining counties that are currently on Tackin. You will be able to, and hopefully that didn't happen again, hopefully you don't need it, but the fallback. If you do have to have mutual aid from one of these constituencies, some of these agencies there, you will be able to have that at your disposal without any, seamless to you.
Every Tackin radio has pre-programmed channels across the state. So when there's an incident, hopefully agencies are coming in, you know, you're directed to turn to the mutual aid channel for whatever it may be, law enforcement, EMS, fire. That's why probably a lot of your fire guys have experienced that. Needs the help, if somebody's on a standalone system, it's very tough to communicate. Tackin makes that easy. We have some good feedback on the system after Helene from TDOT, I believe Sean was saying, there are several areas where only Tackin was working.
If I may, it's a good address and it identifies that well, we can't get it started. I know it's a good system, but we've got a tower and a problem there that is responsibility of the county and it is the hub.
Yeah, I think, I think everybody's agree, White Rock's the center of any, any good communication system here, period.
It's, of course. Houston is needed because we have several large dead spots in the county. You may not be familiar, but for the residents that's here, Bullet's Hall, it's dead. You cannot communicate from number one into Bullet's Hall or from patrol car to patrol car. I could sit on a firing range, it's a mountain fire, with a less than 30 foot pump and hit every bit of it. It's the same West Carter County, it's dead spots there. In the southern part, around the Elk Mills, the Pogie and the Bumper area. I've experienced from firsthand, I'm retired in law enforcement from here in the county. And I started in Woods County, but the only communication we had made it to the drive-in theater. Past that, there was none in anywhere in the county. So there is a one, two Motorola, you know, but, and it's, it's big and trying to get it done. And then to get hit with an emergency like we had here in the disaster. It's hard to get all the services and first responders to give them notice and give us checks and support.
Okay, just go ahead.
Well, my ignorance, electronic and radio systems and such, but you know, during the disaster, Elk Mills and Pogie, the only way they could get out was through satellite. Well, I think we don't do satellite, we would be able to plan by all the frequencies, we'd be going through.
The way they were getting out with the Starlink, they were localized. It was basically an area the size of this building, that was about it. Go up there, they could get communications out through that. For some reason, they wanted to put Starlinks in everyone in the cars and had them out from under the trees and out away from the mountains so they could get a sky shot. They could, they could talk on that, but RF will have a team to negotiate through some of that. They will actually go through the trees much better than the satellite will, than the Starlink will. The biggest issue they had up there, you're right, they couldn't get out on the VHF system, the VHF system went down. And then we were able to get some of the Tackin radios and they're actually working off county, right? Up out there and it's actually backfilling that area and they're actually using portable radios up there to talk to each other on the Tackin system right now.
So that's the spot on the VHF.
Yeah, that's on the backside of White Rock.
Are we still looking at Falls Creek?
Falls Creek, yes.
How much will Falls Creek coverage give us back into Grand Mountain? That'd be decent enough coverage.
It'll cover the eastern side. Probably one forty-three. But back in towards, and then we're gonna use it through, through that area where we would gain it.
So just want to clarify that what we've presented tonight is a change order from our current contract, right? That commissioners asked for two, I guess, two months ago, is that correct? I don't know time frame, but I mean this.
The original change order started about two months ago, but then there was another change in late November.
Okay, so what's coming to us tonight is just the change on that, that what we'd already. It's not, we, we already knew that White Rock was critical. So if we're approving tonight, we're approving just that change order to our original contract that we're already under contract with because we've already got a P.O. Correct or not?
We made, we pulled some radios out, there was a grant, a separate grant, so we just had to make those changes from the original. And then there was some TACAN equipment, you know, some updates, there's actually never equipment than what we had in twenty repeaters at the site and also some of the radios. So we made those changes and then worked with Motorola internally to get the incentives, to get the pricing down to where you guys need it to be. What you're looking at, an updated proposal and it's based on the state of Tennessee contract.
So we're already under contract with Motorola, we've already got the P.O. So basically all we're doing is just updating the contract.
You accepted a proposal.
But does that suffice it, Mr. Harden, for the ARP funds? The ARP funds are not going to go back to the state if we have that P.O.
That is, I believe, what the finance director said.
And we've got that in writing from the state? So if we don't take action on it tonight, we're still waiting on White Rock. Then nothing's really changed, is that? Correct?
So there the initial bid process two years ago, no bids were accepted. Proposal was made by Motorola and TACAN. That proposal was accepted, P.O. was issued. Where we stand now, that proposal has changed a little bit. There was never a formal signed contract, which is what this is, and a change order to the contract, so that, that's where we stand right now. You know, I've seen conflicting things from other sources about the need for a formal signed contract to commit this money. I certainly am not the finance department or the director or the comptroller's office, so it's, I can't question that. But I guess my thought is if, if we're committed to the contract, to the project, you know, this documentation includes other things that are required like performance bond, things that aren't covered in the proposal or the, or the purchase order. So I mean, this clarifies the entire thing and you can't question the commitment of the funds on a contract. So that's my fault. I, I certainly can't tell you that it's today's all or nothing because that's not my place to do, but if, if you're moving forward with the committed project, you certainly couldn't question all the terms covered in a signed document that we don't really have now.
Madam Chair, listen to this, we have not voted as a full body because I was here in twenty-two when this originated in all background. This body has never voted for a contract. This body has not have a signed contract.
Yes, sir, what the commission voted for, I believe, first in May of twenty-two was to move forward with Motorola TACAN for them to develop the pricing quote and then it came back, I believe, in August of twenty-two. Full commission voted to accept that quote proposal and then a P.O. was issued shortly thereafter in that mail. And, you know, of course, that, that's middle of the funds. But as, as far as actual signed documents, other than the P.O., no. We've, we've never had that.
Well, you would think logically, in the direction of everything, yes, any government contracted that such a volume, four or five million dollars, radios and communication for all of our fire departments, all police, all of our first responders, really that you would have a scope of work. But you have that in the proposal here in today's day. That has never been voted on at all in this committee. There has never been a contract signed agreeing to all the things, all the liabilities, all the specifications, all the equipment listed, the amount of the equipment on, it's never been approved. There isn't, nobody can show you a document, is that not a fact?
Like I said, what we have is the approval of the overall proposal, I think, was the one point five at the time and a P.O. issued after that, that's what we have.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but this is all available under state contract, so all we had to accept at that time was a proposal to proceed forward. There was, there didn't need to be a signed contract, it was accepted proposal and then the contract come forth at a later because on the state contract, if something's available on there, we can just purchase the equipment. We're seeking out with Motorola to add on top of the hardware and the initial, the initial response was just for the hardware that was done back in twenty twenty-two. Correct?
Yes, and what, what's came after is this detailed proposal of the timeline and the different responsibilities and the White Rock and all, you know, all the detail, the meat on the bone, so to speak, has what has come after and that's what's detailed in this proposal.
Yeah, and so like the sheriff could go right now, the EMS could go right now and pick up TACAN stuff because it's available on the state contract and it would be available in their budgets, so to speak, to run that stuff.
Yes, yeah, I mean, any government, any government thought of this state contract.
I guess I have a question. How can you approve a change order when you have no contract? How can you approve a change order if something you don't have?
Like I said, my understanding of tonight was, you know, this is the full and final contract. And at the same time, change order to that contract. So that's what we're doing logistically tonight, in my opinion. It's formally approving the final contract and immediately changing the change order.
We're gonna vote on the contract?
That was certainly what I, I think tonight, but you know, that's, that's what I feel like should happen. That is full. This is it, it's in front of you, the proposal is the contract. The state contract is between Motorola and the state of Tennessee that we're purchasing under. The rest of the detailed proposal about all the different activities that have to be done to ready the sites and the towers and all those things, that is the proposal, that is the contract. It's the entire document.
We're in motion to vote on the contract?
A motion to approve it probably a good idea, yes, sir.
I would think so. I like a motion to approve the contract. And the change order.
Just so everyone's clear on the change order, all that is, is we took the fire radios out. It's gonna be changed. Took the fire radios out, it's gonna be funded from a different source.
The change order includes the bond, which is required by law, that was never detailed in anything, that was in the RFP initially, but like I said, we rejected the only bid that was made, so they, they never had to answer the RFP. So there was never a discussion of a performance bond, but they have made that change and acquired the performance bond and we have it here. Which, again, was a requirement that we didn't have before.
We have a motion on the floor, is there a second? Second by Aaron Frazier.
Eric, you can beat me to the button.
Do I want you to do?
Donnie Kay, will, will you repeat your motion?
I make a motion to approve the Motorola contract including the change order.
Madam Chair, did I miss something here? Commissioner Johnson didn't, didn't he declare and ask Mr. riding that if the tower which is currently sits, federal land is not approved, this system will not work?
I heard that.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, I'm hearing all sorts of things tonight.
Thank you.
I would just like to point out that if this, if the federal government decides to change their mind, our existing radio system will cease to work.
I just want to make a point of clarification, the deadline, we did this, had the deadline that was originally December thirty-first of this year to allocate and that was fine, but there is no confusion that these funds have to be spent December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. This project, whatever the commission decides tonight, per the comptroller, not the A comptroller, the comptroller Jason Mumpower, the funds have to be spent and the project completed by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Just wanted to make sure that gets in the minutes and everybody's aware of that because once the boat goes down tonight, guys, you gotta get, you gotta get moving. We, we can't mess around, this is taking way too long, way too many changes, a lot of stuff's been dropped. Replacing the blame game, Carter County needs this radio system in place right now, yesterday, bottom line. Or we're gonna lose that money and we're gonna have an audit filing. So that's my task to you. Twenty twenty-six of December thirtieth, we have to have this project complete. And I don't want anybody to say, nobody told me, I'm telling you, so thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Is Attorney Martin, is this contract able to create a contingency clause?
Well, there's a bunch of contingencies in there already. But it, it would, that would have to be negotiated and, and agreed to by the other side, certainly. I, I believe the contingency for the not acquiring what the White Rock site is to pivot to something not as good. But, you know, that's the only other option there is.
Angie Odom.
Well, I mean, I feel we've, we've got to put it in the contract that if it's not approved, then we're not going, that has to be stipulation in the contract. Because we have a contract and then the power's not approved and we're still held and bound by this contract. And, and there we're gonna be. So it needs to have, motion needs or needs to have some kind of
Contract will have to be fulfilled before maybe be expected.
Well, and, but what if the tower's not approved?
That's what I mean, and that's part of the contract, if that, if that's not fulfilled, the contract as a whole is not fulfilled.
Right, we have to have that in there, we're gonna be stuck with the contract and it wouldn't fit in.
Contract is contingent of rule of the site. Always has been.
And lose the site.
Always has been.
Nick Haller.
I know we said that if White Rock is not approved, what about the ridge? Would that be a suitable site? It's barely close. And I know we used to have a place up there and we were about forty-four hundred feet. If there is some private land up there, would that be possible? So I, I mean, what's the elevation of White Rock?
White Rock's forty-one hundred feet.
So it's actually a little bit taller up on Ridge. And I know, I know where the land is at, it might be suitable. Owners might let.
Thank you, I yield, yeah, Chair, thank you. Back to something that was said just a second ago, sorry, I blanked out thinking about what Nick was saying. On the, as far as the contract goes, this is saying that we're moving forward with the contract in the event that White Rock is gonna be the site, because if it's not, all of these plans and all of their expectations have gone completely out the window. And we're gonna have to come back at ground zero with somebody else that will not have their knowledge about how this is supposed to work to expend the funds in twenty twenty-six. That's not gonna happen. Because we're already two years into this, just to get to this point for the federal government to remember that they misclassified their own property. So this is the best option that we have currently. It's the only option that we have currently to avoid a gigantic audit filing.
Really and truthfully, we have no option other than to continue with the White Rock. Because no matter who we wind up with, it's all gonna continue to just bounce back to White Rock. There's the permanent repeater up there, we have fire department repeater up there. So what do we think's gonna happen to all those repeaters? They're gonna bring them down. At this point, I don't feel like we have a whole lot to lose by trying to go this route because any other system that we came up with is gonna have to White Rock Tower, I mean, we're this far in. I hate playing games with the federal government. Not getting any hurry and sometimes I think they do this hoping that we will just give up and move on. So in my opinion, I mean, everything, everything in Grand Mountain, I had a radio on my car responsible, everything and Sean having White Rock. And that's why my firemen were up there every single day keeping the tower going. And so, you know, I just, I feel like this, we don't really have many options other than this because every option is going to just run back to White Rock. And hopefully they will pull the whole thing, which means we're gonna lose all of our radios in the first place up there.
Back to you, Aaron.
Sorry, hopefully my last time, and this isn't a sunk cost fallacy situation either because there are no other options. If this doesn't pan out, we're gonna have to sink the cost somewhere else. So seeing this one, seeing this part through to the end is not going to cost us any more than art than having to find two other locations to make up for the one that we have.
Okay, Willie, you're right.
It's dignity, it's which this tire that we'll be talking about on the ridge. Yep. So it'll automatically, everything shipped. They're lined up right there.
Basically it would be, it's the GPS location of, we're not gonna put it here, we'll live here. GPS coordinates or, or at least an address on some of these locations. What I can do is, we can actually run a map, find out what we're gonna need.
Madam Chair, I call for a motion.
Okay, we now will need to vote on whether to cease the discussion. It must pass by a two-thirds majority vote to cease the discussion. So a yes vote is to cease, a no vote is to continue talking. Does anybody under, not understand? Does anybody not understand? Yes, you don't need a second on that. We're saying about right Johnson. All right, so yes vote ceases discussion. Let's vote. Will Campbell?
Yes.
You wanna think about that?
So, discussion is ceased. We will now be voting on the motion that Donnie Cable made to accept the contract. All right, I call the vote. Yes. Will Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes. And his motion will be a change order. So it has passed with the change. All right, I believe that winds up that part of our evening. Thank you, gentlemen. Commission, do you need another break? Let's go on to vote. Okay, Jerry, you're outvoting.
Hey, Jerry.
All right, Dr. Ray Kev will lead us through the budget in a minute.
I'm going to. Make a run for it.
We have 13 items to come before you're not from the Budget Committee. And I will go through each one if they pass Budget Committee. All of them will unanimous say the first one. And for a legitimate. Motion is not to extend the contract for the promotion and development of tourism in Carter County, Tennessee, to the Chamber of Commerce, placing the incoming hotel motel tax funds into a reserve account and explore other entities to promote tourism. Madam Chair, I will also include in that motion to limit the wait for over 40 minutes.
So in your packet, under item 14A, number one, his motion reads, as stated, with the addition of discussion not to exceed 40 minutes. So Avery Wendy, second to motion. Right, we have a motion and a second. The floor is open for discussion.
Chair, let me continue just for a minute so the commission understands where we are. In terms of the end of contract with the chamber, which will occur on March the 9th, 2025, that's why it's coming before you tonight. We only have so many days or so many months set of time before this actual contract sunsets. So that you can understand our obligations. And if you, this motion is defeated, you will be extending their contract for three more years. There you go.
Kelly Collins.
So I want to make sure everyone understands, if we vote yes on this motion, the chamber will not get their contract.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
I'm sure everyone understands that. If you vote yes, then the Chamber of Commerce will not get their contract. Thank you.
Donnie Cable.
I might make a suggestion. Whether it's doable or not, I don't know. Since we don't have a plan going forward, and in March, it's done. What's gonna happen? Here's my suggestion. If it can be done, extend this contract for one year to give time for us to set a practice, set a process, and let the chamber, give them time to do the same thing. Work on their situation. If we drop it, then they're not gonna have the time, and we brought this on them. That's my suggestion.
Avery, ma'am.
I've got a few questions I'd like to ask about this. The speakers we had tonight for the paperwork, the Carter County Chamber, we had 25 speakers. Probably one of them was a hard yes on maintaining the contract. Most, if not all of them, live or work or own business within the city. With the exception of maybe one or two. Does Elizabethan fund any of the chamber?
My knowledge, no, they do not.
Yeah, no, why?
I don't know that answer. It's not in their budget.
They get the tax the same as the county does, don't they? What do they do with that tax money?
I assume that they, like the plan is here, put it in a reserve account to be used at some point in time when they determine how they're going to promote tourism.
Another question I had, I looked at the Carter County Tourism website today. And in that website, it said the last time it was updated was in 22. They listed seven eating establishments in Rome Mountain, in Rome Mountain. Three of them have been closed for over a year, and at least one, if not two of them, have been closed for two years. Does it cost to be a member of the chamber? Anybody answer that?
It does cost. I don't know how much. I know that the commission, Carter County are members of the chamber, and we have to pay for that membership.
Is the Carter County Chamber of Commerce a nonprofit?
Yes, they are.
How do you charge somebody and still maintain a nonprofit status? I don't know the laws on nonprofits, that's why I'm asking.
Your next question.
A nonprofit has operational costs. It's just, you're not making an actual business profit, but they do charge money or collect money through donations, and they have operational costs to do.
Another question I have is, is it a copy of their budget? Right here in Carter County, nonprofit loss statement, 23 to 24. It lists advertising, total advertising, expenses, advertising for co-op advertising is 12,000. Local request from local, 15,000. Regional advertising is just over 14,000. Advertising others 209,000. Where's all that money being advertised at? I have yet to see more than one commercial for Carter County on any mode of advertising on TV or whatever. I do not watch much TV, but I have not seen any advertising in the 17 years I've been up here.
Well, I'll echo something that Senator DeStake representative Renee Jones said. I have, wife and I have traveled on Legion Air, Avatar Cities, out of North Carolina, out of Cox Mill, and if you don't through their booklet, there is at least one advertisement for the Appalachian Trail in Rome Mountain.
I'd like to see an individual breakdown of where it went to the advertising instead of the 40,000. I'd like to see basically some that's going to Legion Air for advertising there. It's an ACL or CYP or whoever, rather than just a general one. And it comes with total advertising, 237,000, some change. That's not telling me much about what they do. I don't see a lot of benefit to the county fund a new contract on more than a one-year basis. Because it's not supporting so much the county as it is the city. Guess we can get some of it down in Rome Mountain, but not earn much. I don't see worth of profit to the insurance that much for our county. More so than it is for much as it is in the city, doesn't it?
Aaron.
What was the source of that P and L document? Okay, because it doesn't resemble anything that I've seen through the chamber boards or anything like that. Like specifically, who in the chamber had sent you the P and L document?
We have to now report to the state, and that was the document that he provided, that we provided to the state for their request.
Okay, and that's just the straight document? It is not, it doesn't have any differences or anything like that? That's just the original document?
That's the original document, is that correctly? And that's what we reported to the state.
Okay, and I want to dip into something real quick regarding advertising. The way that advertising works in this day and age, if you live in an area that is being advertised, you will not see any of that advertisement. If you've, I've played with a lot of advertising across Instagram, Facebook, Twitter, different places like that, and you can get very specific. You can target people's hair color when it comes down to who can actually see an advertisement that you have put out. So the fact that you've not seen anything is a good thing, because it's not going to turn around and come back in. We're not trying to get people that already live here to tour here. We're trying to get people away from here to tour here. Looking at the impressions, clicks per month, different things like that, that have changed since Mr. Freeman came on board until now, there's about a 15% to 20% increase in click-through rate. There is a significant increase in, a significant decrease in cost and for the number of impressions that they're getting. What impressions are, is the number of people that actually see your ad. They don't click it, and typically it takes between seven and eight times for somebody seeing something before them to decide to click on it. And they're getting around, for YouTube, it's around 46,000 impressions and 26,000 views per month. Over 50%, that is absolutely ridiculous. It is insanely high, because most campaigns only have a 1% to 5% click-through rate. What they put out resonates with the right people. Advertising in this day and age for tourism is about two things. Making sure you get your ad in front of the right people and the ad being appealing to those people. And that's what they are doing. Their numbers show that. The number one ad of the past five years, it was a dude skateboarding down the sidewalk, drinking an Ocean Spray drink. It sold out Ocean Spray in markets across the US. Strategic organic content is what people are looking for, and it's not where someone like yourself, Mr. Winn, or many of us are even gonna be looking. It's gonna be in places like TikTok, Instagram, short-form content, shorts on YouTube, different things like that. Those are the types of advertising that they're putting, where they're putting their eggs in the basket appropriately. I mean, as far as print advertising goes, they put out a tremendous number of ads, and the places they put it are what are called gas tank drops. So it's outside of this area, but about a gas tank away. So they'll spend a half a tank of gas getting here and a half a tank of gas going home. They're putting them in magazines, they're putting them in circulars, they're putting them in all the right places, and they're seeing response on there. Based on the amount of funding that the state says that tourism brings into this county, we have approximately, on average, 926 people that come into this county every day. Where the state has spent approximately $168, that's what makes up the funding that is in there. The local option sales tax that is generated specifically within the county goes to the bottom line on the schools, because the 2 and 3/4% that we have added on to our sales tax affects what the school system, what we don't have to pay them in property taxes. So if we take out, if we start, we take our foot off the gas and that starts going down, that is going to cause property taxes to continue to inch up. Right now, what they, what they put in saves approximately each household in the county $206 on their tax bill on an annual basis. It is not a drop in the bucket. I mean, if you're having to replace $2 million, almost $2 million, you're looking at between 17, around 17 cents, that the tax rate would have to go up to replace that local option sales tax that is directly related to somebody using a debit or credit card that is not in this state and getting captured by state tourism. That's how they track it. The money that comes in on the Airbnb's and everything, since the state made that change, our contribution has gone up, because prior to, I don't remember the exact year, but prior to that, Airbnb's were not required to pay hotel motel taxes. State of Tennessee committed to, yeah, you are. That's why we saw an increase in revenue for that. These people were already coming in many cases, but the revenue continues to climb year over year. We're almost, what, 56 million to the local economy? And that's how they derive that roughly $2 million in local option sales tax. It's, they're doing a very good job. And if we try to retain this for ourselves and shop the contract around, the foot is not gonna be on the gas anymore. There's gonna be $0 spent towards advertising. I'm not saying it's gonna stop people from coming here, but it absolutely scares me when we have 677 houses that are gonna have their amount that they pay on their property taxes changed, and 74 that just aren't gonna be there anymore. And all the growth in houses that we have seen statistically and traditionally are from people moving here from out of state. Last I heard, there was about 121 new houses that were coming on the roll. Has that number changed? So, if we're just gonna hold the money, if we're just gonna hold the money and we're gonna take our foot off the gas, we're losing 74 houses, we're gonna be losing, we're gonna be losing tourism dollars on top of that. How are we going to make that up without making the taxpayers do it? Because what we're hearing from is the people that actually earn this money for the county saying, hey, we like what they're doing, why are we getting in their way? It's just the same thing, it's just a situation a little bit flipped over from the White Rock side. Because the federal government didn't know that one of their sites was a communication tower. Now, we're coming in and saying that we can do tourism better when not a single solitary one of us in this room has any experience in that field. And if you're gonna shop the contract, the tourism field is so small, you're gonna end up with absolutely zero people coming back in to put in for that contract. Because they're seeing what we're doing here tonight, and they're like, nope, I'm not, I'm not gonna stick my nose in that basket. Because they're doing a good job, and if we shop it out to a more advertising agency, 60% of what we give them right off the top of the bat is gonna go into salaries and profit for them. Whereas, under our chamber, we don't have that problem. Ed Rosen, Sullivan County's not gonna pick it up. Jeff Taylor in Green County's not gonna pick it up. None of those guys are gonna pick it up, because they see what's going on here tonight. They're doing an outstanding job, and we're here saying, eh, we're gonna try something different. If there was a plan in place and something like that, that would be more online, and more online and more on point. But what we're doing is almost suicide. If we take into consideration, if we were to modify the contract three years from now and say, hey, and say, hey, one percent of what comes in off the hotel motel tax, we're going to put directly into tourism development, that still doesn't even work, because we still have to, under the, under the guise of our contract, we still have to contract with a nonprofit agency. So a new nonprofit would have to come onboard just specifically to expend those funds. We can't retain them and spend them ourselves, otherwise we lose the one percent under the private act. So if we try to change anything under the private act, it goes away, we lose one percent. I don't see how any of this pans out in our positive. You want to work on a plan over the next three years, that's fine. Don't try to, don't try to push one year, two years, something like that to rough it in. They know what they're doing, and they've been doing it, and they've been doing it well. We don't need to get in their way. Government does not need to learn how to advertise for itself. Government needs to get out of the way of the people that know what they're doing.
Okay, hold it down, please. Todd Smith, you have the floor. I'm sorry, Todd Smith, you have the floor.
I couldn't hear, for a good reason. A couple of comments, whereas I was on the budget committee that sent this to the full I think we needed to get to this point, if nothing else, for one reason. And a couple of the folks that are sitting out here right now mentioned this, so if we would have had more communication, both on our side and the chamber's side, I don't think we would have gotten to this point. I really don't. And I say that from looking as, as a person who actually wanted this to go to this point. That doesn't mean I want to see it pass and being taken out of your hands, but I wanted it to see a conversation between us and the chamber. I know in the two, a little over two years that I've been a commissioner, I've not seen a budget that's been submitted to the chamber. Has anyone from the chambers, anyone else, anyone seen a budget? Is that not required under the private act? And there again, we lost a chance of communication. And that's all I'm wanting. I'm wanting communication, which we got, I wish we had this before, but we didn't have that. Thank you to you for doing this. See, you all do make a difference. Being here makes a difference, and I tell people every day, if you've got something to say, by all means, stand up and say it. So I applaud you for doing that, but we do have a ways to go. We do have improvements that need to be done.
Thank you, ma'am. I yield.
Okay. Well, just to clarify a few little questions that I heard. So one of the things we have to remember is our motels are in the city. So when you're talking motel tax, that is also in the city. You were talking about the city and vice versa, but we also have to remember, the city is within the county. So it all goes into one, you know what I'm talking about, with money and the taxes and so forth. The other thing that has been confusing, and it was even for me, and that's why I took time to call different people and understand and clarify some things, and that is, sometimes when a chamber is there to advertise for their area, but also this money is there to advertise for the area. So because it shares the same building, it can be really confusing at which part is chamber and which part is the tourism. But it does say that it has to be handled by a nonprofit. Now, I will tell you, I don't know of any nonprofits right now that just has time to sit down at a computer and to be doing advertisement. I don't, and I, and I wouldn't want to be, because it would drive me nuts, sitting at a computer. But I'm just saying in the fact that we have to remember, you asked about memberships. The chamber does charge memberships, but that's the chamber. Tourism is separate. So that can be confusing, it was confusing to me, I clarified, of understanding. I know I have heard, both sides, we've gotten to hear, how the wonderful way that the chamber and tourism works, but I know from hearing some of a few comments from their county residents or businesses in the county, they're like, but there seems to be a lot more said about businesses on Main Street, or businesses more in the city than in the county. But one thing we have to realize, just like Todd just said, is this communication today, has there ever been a meeting that we set and said to tourism, this is our expectations, this is what we're wanting? We're unhappy because we're not getting it. I don't know of such a meeting. So to me, it's not fair, you don't explain to someone who's already hired in to do something, and then you complain, and then at the last minute on this day, oh, we're just going to take away this contract, if we've not had the right conversations of communication, of this is what we expect, and then ask them, what do you expect from us? What do we expect from you? And it'd be clear, yeah, there's this contract, but looking at the numbers that was given, I went through and was highlighting where it has improved, I want to say that, you know, if we're going on what we're voting on tonight, we would say no. But after looking at these numbers over the years, most of the time, it's always improving. So we would basically be taking away something that is improving our area. I, I don't, I'm just being real with you, I'm open-minded, I don't vote just because, you know, people, and I know you all don't either, we're here to make the best decision for our county and community. We have heard from citizens, business owners, leaders of different organizations and banks, we're here to tell us that it's helping them. Who are we and where, you show me the evidence that it's not, and I would be out to listen. But so far, I haven't heard in here tonight how it's hurting us. I've only heard how it's helping us. And we are at a very crucial time. We're more than having to get a Band-Aid put on. I mean, we're, we're complete bodycasts in our county right now. And I mean, that's just the only way to look at it. We do not have a plan. Right now, we do not have a plan. That would be like me taking away, calling my, well, I've already went through that at the center, saying that our landlord, we're going to cancel our lease, and we have no plan of where to go, right in the most critical time. That would be crazy. But at the same time, why move if we haven't, we don't have a good reason to move? And if you have issues, aren't you supposed to go to those individuals and say, here is the issues, and now let's work on this? And then if those issues aren't resolved, then you look at taking something away. It's not right to do this if we have not shared the right communication. We want citizens to communicate with us, but they do expect us to communicate with them.
Are you? Tony Cable.
I've talked to many people in the last week about this issue. One thing I didn't hear is any negatives toward the chamber or tourism, no negative. And I've talked to many, and I've received texts, I've received phone calls and emails. Why don't we want to take away something that's working? It's working, nobody's, the people, you hear the people tonight, they're here, it's working for them. It's working for those people in the county, because I've talked to a lot of county businesses, not just city businesses, the county businesses. Are you?
Mr. Nguyen.
I've got your questions. The Nova contract is expiring, March is, at the end of March, somewhere around there.
March ninth.
Whose responsibility is to initiate the contract talks?
Well, the, all contracts start out at financial management as we proceed to the commission floor. Obviously, the county attorney has to be a part of that. This contract stands now, it is a three-year contract. Most of our contracts in this county are three years. Take healthcare, for instance, we would do that every year. Here, are there any other county contracts that extend beyond three years?
Yes, we have a question. The company we're associated with are a one-year contract, renewable on a yearly basis, not an automatic renewal. This is the first time I've been here, and this contract has come up, and I've been here for two years, just over two years now. I understand it's a three-year contract?
Yes, sir.
Initiated in sixteen?
That's when we started the process, sixteen, twenty seventeen.
In nineteen or twenty, did it come up for renewal?
Yes, it did.
Was it an automatic renewal, or was it rolled over?
The, the commission voted on that one. We have not voted to review this contract in six years.
Yeah, I think that it's time to review the contract, vote on the contract, make it a yearly renewal contract. The contract has to be applicable.
So I, I get it into the crux of the summary that you had, Rudy. Okay, well, that we would have best served extending a one-year contract, and spending our time looking at maybe alternatives.
We've got now till March ninth, contract can be negotiated without extending. Is there a reason that it can't be done?
Yes, the contract can be renegotiated, but under the current, that takes two people, right? It takes two sides to negotiate, so we can't unilaterally change the terms of the contract. It has to be agreed to with the other side. So yes, you could tonight choose to provide notice, or direct me to provide notice, that you're not going to renew the three-year contract automatically in advance of that auto-renewal, you're going to notify them, hey, we're not going to renew this, and then maybe you could negotiate with them on different terms that are more, you know, pleasing to you. That's an option, but it takes two people to negotiate, so you can't just do that tonight on our own.
I really, I mean, Ken, do we have to wait till the contract is over to renegotiate it, to come up with a new contract? We've got between now and the ninth of March that we can come up with a contract.
Markley, yes. If, if, if the notification isn't sent essentially by January the eighth or seventh, however long it's going to take, it's certainly about later to get there, if you don't send that notice prior to that date, you auto-renew is on the existing term. So basically, unless you're planning on meeting again for January seventh, tonight's the decision, as it says. Now, certainly, you can negotiate with the other side, as long as they're willing to negotiate, change all kinds of terms, as far as the inner workings of it, but we can't change the fact that we have to contract with a nonprofit or single civic organization. We can't change the fact that all the money's been on tourism or tourism development. Those things are non-changing. But certainly, you know, other benchmarks of reporting, or, you know, a different sense of the term, all those things can be negotiated, absolutely. But the problem is now we've come to the eleventh hour on this, as far as the auto-renew.
My question is, is why is it going to the eleventh hour to come up for?
I can't answer that.
It's a combination of factors, I think, of not corresponding to each other. But it would not be more on the person with the contract, with the county, to bring it up to the county, hey, our contract is coming up for renewal, are you going to renew it, or do we negotiate it, or what? That is my question. This, this is the first time I've come across, and I've been a commissioner for over two years, this is the first time I've come across a contract that's for more than one year. Anywhere I've been, whether it be the business I work at, whether it be, well, like you said, the insurance for the county, maintenance contracts for the equipment at the landfill, contract for the equipment at the county garage, stuff like that, that's all a one-year contract.
I, I will say, there are some entities who certainly desire the security of a longer contract. One, for instance, is, is the Carter County Research Corps. That was a particular negotiated thing, because they have initial plans years in advance. I think that's the same argument made tonight to some of the chamber folks. So certainly, there are organizations that would desire a longer than one-year contract, and we certainly have that ability. Maintenance and things like that, they come and go, and they'll move on to the next people to maintain. This is a little bit of a different.
I just, I don't understand why it's being rolled over and not discussed or even negotiated at that point.
Yeah, it's certainly at the pleasure of the commission.
You all are the commissioners, you can make it, yeah, any motion that you want to make. Julie, you want to speak up a little bit?
I think you all are dead, louder than me.
I can't recognize Julie right now, and I've got three other people waiting to speak. And Dr. Acuff, I don't know if you started a timer or not, but I'm thinking we're at about thirty minutes. We only have ten minutes left, according to your also approval of that motion. So I want to recognize the people that haven't spoken at all. Hey, so right now, Jerry Stout has the floor.
Thank you. We've heard a lot tonight about all the great and wonderful things about the chamber, and I don't disagree with anything we've heard. However, I'm a firm believer in the competitive bidding process. I believe that's the only way you keep monopolies out, is to have competitive bids. However, having said that, we're at the eleventh hour, and I don't think it would be prudent to end this contract tonight with no path forward. I think we need to really take some time to do our due diligence and put together a plan and workforce, and I concur with Commissioner Cable on if there's any way to extend this for one year, I think that's a good idea, if we can do that legally. If not, then the suggestion was made earlier that we renew this one and start working in the next period to negotiate something that we can all live with. But I do believe in competitive bids, and as great and wonderful as the chamber is, our work history has proved one thing to me, there's not any agency, and there's not any person that cannot be replaced. I yield to you.
Charlie Thomas.
I just have one quick question. The committee brought this to us, and they seemed pretty convinced it needed to come for a vote not to renew it. I'm just curious as to what you all were thinking when you decided to bring it here to not renew. What caused you to?
The vote from the committee were, was six yeas, one nay, and one abstention. And I think probably the crux is that we were in motion to roll it over yet another three years and not consider it as we do so many other things. So it would automatically renew, as it did three years ago. It doesn't mean that at the end of this discussion, whatever the vote is, that we don't entertain Commissioner Cable and Commissioner Stout's suggestion. That has to be in the motion, because this comes from the budget committee.
It wasn't a, a general dissatisfaction with the work they were doing, it was more of a, let's be good stewards of our role in overseeing where our money's going, how it's handled, and?
Yeah, I think, I think you're absolutely right. I think it's irresponsible that we not consider alternatives. We do this with every outside vendor, just like we do every year with healthcare. And the commission votes on that, whether we stay with, for instance, Blue Cross Blue Shield, or we shop it to United Healthcare, do something else, do we want to pay this rate? So those discussions occur, and I think several of us, me included, were really concerned about, we rolled it over, now we're in the sixth year, and maybe it's time to put limits on this and look for alternatives. As Chair Holder knows, and Vice Chair Nguyen, Chairman Johnson, Vice Chair Dill, I've had, last week, I spent a lot of time on the phone and in emails with Melanie Bocamp, who is the Assistant Commissioner for Tourism for Rural Areas. She sent me a list, I have to share it with anybody who wants to see it, that there are a number of ways to do this. that there are a number of ways to do this. Not everybody uses a chamber. Some have established nonprofits that they work with, some may be the city, some may be the county, some may do a combination of both. So again, I think we have to act as responsible agents, say, are there other alternatives?
And if I'm, that is correct. We have to cancel the contract in order to rewrite the contract? Or can we make a motion to say that we're going to continue our contract with them, but we're going to negotiate?
I don't think we can negotiate. When you pass this, it automatically renews three years.
I understand.
And I had this sidebar conversation with the county attorney, and it really needs to be in the motion. Correct me if I'm wrong, Kevin.
Well, the motion that came out of Budget Committee needs to be acted upon, certainly. And then if there's a different motion, or unless that motion is amended, that was the motion that came out of Budget Committee. So a second motion could be made to do something different. Just let me clarify, I have to look at everything in black and white, and so if it... They're not obligated to negotiate. By no means am I saying they won't negotiate. They may negotiate tomorrow, right? That's fine, but I have to look at it in black and white and say, as of tonight, it's either renew or non-renew. By no means am I saying they won't negotiate with us and change it, and maybe they'll shorten it from three years. I can't control that, but it takes that agreement, correct? We can't just change it. So, you know, I have to say, if there are those who don't want it to renew for three years, then you might consider taking the step of notifying them this is not going to be renewed, and then negotiate. But that's up to you, not up to me. I'm just trying to explain the options.
So if we do what has been recommended by a couple of people, we can actually vote not to renew it, and then can we make a motion to offer them a one-year contract so we can get this process moving?
Absolutely. You can make an offer, and that their board will meet and vote, and they can decide if they accept those terms, and certainly.
And that would solve your committee's concerns?
Okay. So just to restate, unless there's other questions, if you vote yes on this motion, we're voting not to extend the contract. If you vote no, you will extend the contract by three years.
Does anyone else wish to speak? There are a few minutes left. Gary, you have it.
Is it my understanding that we want to do away with the three-year contract and the auto-renewal?
I think that's the feeling of the majority of people on this commission that has sat to me, and in discussion, both in financial management and budget. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Leslie.
Question for the attorney. Attorney Harden, if we did vote to not renew the contract tonight, how does that affect the Private Act?
Well, the Private Act doesn't name the chamber. The Private Act names a suitable nonprofit or civic organization. If you don't change the allocation of funding, and it's still used by that civic organization, nonprofit organization to promote and develop tourism, we're still under the Private Act. I mean, the Private Act doesn't specify it has to be used for the chamber.
Did we have the Private Act in our packet?
Yes.
The contract that we're under now from 2016 was basically developed off of the Private Act with the chosen partner of the chamber. The Private Act should be in there.
I'm only seeing the memorandum of understanding. That's not the full Private Act, that's just the email.
In the interest of time, I'm going to go ahead and let Aaron speak.
Yeah, go ahead, thank you.
Okay, Chair.
Do you limit it to thirty seconds, please?
No disertations, is that what you're trying to say?
We can pass it forty minutes, I'm going to call for a vote.
Okay. We are voting to cease discussion. We are voting to cease discussion. Yes, please vote, and yes vote ceases the discussion.
Willie Campbell?
Yes.
I've not got an option. No.
Motion passes, we go straight to a vote on the motion made by Dr. Acuff.
Motion is to extend the contract from the development through our county Tennessee to the Chamber of Commerce, and also place the incoming hotel and hotel tax allowance into a reserve account and explore other entities promoting tourism, reminding that March ninth, 2025, that contract sunsets. If you vote yes on this motion, you vote to end the contract. If you vote no, you're extending the contract.
Just to clarify something, the funds have to keep going until March ninth, so this reserve account stuff doesn't start until after the contract would expire unless it's renegotiated.
Charlie Thomas, there's no more.
That's okay.
We are voting.
Willie Campbell?
Yes.
You vote yes?
Yeah.
Motion passes. So.
It does not have to be two-thirds the majority since it's existing. Does the matter of charity wish to proceed, or do you want to take a minute break, or what? We've got twelve more items for budget.
I personally could use a break. I hate to leave them in the rocks, but. Please try to keep it to five minutes this time, please.
There's a linebacker. I'll have to reach around somebody.
When I was understanding them, they had to say, no, the bid is wrong. And they could read that statement. I could ask what they were going to come back and. They just.
I hollowed out the business of this whole environment. I'm assuming that they won't have the business considered. I mean, like, they'll basically, like, stop them about two-thirds of their jobs or another job. They just basically pick them out.
I lost three for any mortgage service. They didn't even suggest it.
A chapman's got a tea time in the morning clock.
You gotta know if I can do it. The business is, we can get started back, please.
We're back, the whole and Budget Committee amendments. A place to, a motion to approve resolution to authorize the county mayor to make a signed application for, you know, for rehabilitation of these businesses, that's common coverage, grant funds on behalf of our county. We have to ask for, please, two hundred and fifty thousand to get on our screen. The mayor is asking them for a million. Look in the package, you will also see the requirements based on. Based on the number of rooms or bedrooms, uh, that you do. So I'm not sure you. You have seen it. It is in the package. It will give us. Division. Ask for that one million dollars. No cost to the county. Uh, you don't have to match it. So. Emirati. Is in, uh, passing. House Development Agency as well as the resolution that was prepared by.
You have a second, Marisa Teles. Is there any discussion? Let's vote. Campbell.
Yes.
Uh, third. Um. Item number three. Motion to approve four thousand one hundred and forty dollars. Active nine one one contract. Should be in your packet as well. This was brought through the government unfair. Budget. This was unanimous vote, uh, unanimous votes.
Seconded by any views or any questions? Let's vote. Will Campbell?
Yes.
I have any issues? Yes. Yes. I'm not.
Please. Hillary.
Oh, I'm sorry. Josh.
I'm looking over at him. That's all.
Thank you. Thank you.
That is unanimous. Item number four. I'll make the motion to approve credit application for Clark Power Services. For the Highway Department in the amount not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars. Um. This is for the high powered machinery side of the house, particularly the great all. Other entities, uh, that great Williams works on. Uh, they had some difficulty in being able to pass through those funds and getting their. Vehicles worked on. So that's what that's for.
Seconded by Julie Dwayne. Are there any questions? Let's vote. Campbell.
Yes.
Thank you. It's unanimous. Item number five. I'll make the motion to approve the parks and recreation purchase. Or acquisition for paint supplies for the Rome Mountain Recreation Foundation. In the amount of six hundred and twenty nine hours. With funds to be charged to the emergency disaster.
Seconded by Danny Deal. Any comments? Let's vote. Willie Campbell?
Yes.
All eyes, thank you. Item number six. I'll make the motion. Finance Director should be granted access to the FEMA portal. A little background from this. Uh, we've got to have anything that goes through the FEMA portal also coming through the finance office so that we know what has been reimbursed or has not been. So she needs to have access to that as well.
Question is seconded by Julie Dwayne. Are there any questions? Let's vote. Will Campbell?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, motion passes twenty one two. Now we're on item number seven. And some of these are more detailed than others. There are six items, um, on this particular budget amendment. So I'll make the motion, uh. To approve County Fund Budget Amendment one on one dash five. Out of one through six. In the amount of seventy seven thousand eight hundred and seventy seven dollars and eighty eight cents. With sixty thousand nine hundred and fifty five dollars and eighty three cents. Coming from reserve funds and nothing coming from the other side. Those items are in your packet. If anybody needs, uh, specifics, I'm happy to all.
Motion seconded by Nancy Brown. Are there any questions? Okay, let's vote. Willie Campbell?
Yes.
Thank you. Twenty two eyes, one name. Motion passes. Uh, next item, uh, I'll make the motion. To approve Highway Fund Ba- Fund Balance Amendment one three one dash three. Items one and two. Amount of six hundred and five thousand dollars with nothing coming from the undersigned fund balance.
Motion seconded by Jason Clausen. Are there questions? Please vote. Campbell?
Yes.
Okay, thank you all eyes. Number nine. A motion to approve the general purpose school fund. Budget Amendment one four one dash three. Out of one through fourteen. In the amount of four million eight hundred and seventy six thousand fifty one dollars and nine of six cents. With five thousand six hundred and three dollars and twenty nine cents. It's coming from reserve accounts. And four thousand one hundred and forty one dollars and forty nine cents coming from the undersigned. Alex. School. Budget.
Motion seconded by Jerry Crawford. Let's vote. Will Campbell?
Yes.
All eyes. That's unanimous. Thank you. Let's move on to. School. Federal Projects Fund one four one. So I'll make the motion to accept. Federal Projects Fund. Budget Amendment four one. I mean, four, one four two dash three. Items one through sixteen. In the amount of one million, three hundred and forty three thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars and seventy seven cents. On your, uh, motion, it says that there. Are dollars coming out of reserve accounts and also from the. Undecided fund balance. That in fact is not true. There's nothing coming out of either of those, uh, generalized items.
Seconded by Todd Smith. Are there any questions or clarifications? Please vote.
We never need to go. Sorry. I have a question. Um.
Okay, Leslie, you go ahead.
So you're saying that it doesn't have anything coming from reserve or from. Drop.
That's correct.
We need to change the, the writing of the actual motion?
Well, can you take the fifty six hundred and the. There and just put some.
The one million, three hundred and forty three thousand. With nothing coming from the undersigned fund balance?
So you've got nothing coming from either the reserve accounts or from undersigned fund.
All right, thank you for that. Let's vote. Will Campbell?
Yes.
All eyes, thank you. Next item. Item number eleven. And I'll make the motion to approve H. Park Fund Budget Amendment one four five dash two. Out of one in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars with nothing coming from the undersigned. Or reserve.
Seconded by Angie Odom. Any questions? Let's vote. Willie Campbell?
Yes.
Thank you. Unanimous. Let's move on to the animal shelter. And I'll make the motion to approve animal shelter. Money restricted donations in the amount of one thousand six hundred and twenty four dollars. Animal shelter. Non-restricted donations in the amount of fifty thousand dollars. That's coming from Boyd Foundation. Totalling fifty one thousand five hundred and twenty four dollars and thirty cents.
Motion is seconded by Danny Deal. Let's vote. Willie Campbell?
Yes. One one.
That is unanimous. Thank you. Moving to the last item from the budget committee. I'll approve the motion to approve the animal shelter. Non-honorary donations in the amount of.
This is seconded by Lisa Childress. Please vote. Campbell?
Yes. There.
Thank you. That's unanimous. Madam Chair, uh, yield back.
Madam Chair, just a second before you leave, Doc. Number twelve. If you look at the addition, you had sixteen hundred dollars added to fifty thousand. The total is a hundred dollars off. You may want to address that.
Oh, yeah. Attorney Hart, we don't need to vote on. Correction.
Most of the corrections I've had caught in the minutes. Everybody.
As Commissioner Johnson points out, we're a hundred dollars off. On the total on item number twelve. Instead of, uh, fifty one thousand five hundred and twenty four dollars. It's just a grade of. Fifty one, six, twenty four. Five, twenty.
From the, uh, financial management. You have six items. First item is a motion to accept the one year contract with one side. The EMA alert system. The start date is September sixteenth of twenty twenty four. The amount of four, uh, four thousand one hundred and forty dollars. I'll be ready.
You're second. Seconded by Nick Holder. Questions? Let's vote. Willie Campbell?
Yes.
Thank you. Unanimous. Item number two. Motion to approve the disposal of surplus property. List for the property assessor's office. Date eleven fifteen of twenty twenty four.
Seconded by Avery Nguyen. Any questions? Let's vote. Willie Campbell?
Yes.
Thank you. Unanimous. Number three. Motion to approve the disposal of surplus property list for Happy Valley Middle. Date eight two. Four.
Seconded by Steve Earl. Questions? Let's vote. Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passed. Motion number four. To approve the disposal of surplus property list for Happy Valley Middle. Eight, twenty. Twenty twenty four.
Seconded by Avery Nguyen. Let's vote. Campbell?
Yes.
Unanimous. Thank you. Number five. The motion to approve the disposal of surplus property. Good for Happy Valley Middle School. Date eight one of twenty twenty four.
Seconded by Jason Clausen. Let's vote. Okay.
Yes.
Unanimous. Thank you. Number six. The final one. Motion to approve the disposal. Surplus properties. List for Central Elementary. Eight, eight, eight of twenty twenty four.
Seconded by Jason Clausen. Let's vote. Campbell?
Yes. Yes. We see nothing's there. Yes.
It's dying.
Unanimous. That's. One item under non-named committee. Uh, motion to appoint Commissioner Todd Smith. The current vacancy on the audit committee.
Motion seconded by Steve Earl. Let's vote. Campbell?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you, Chairman Field. Does any other committee want to have a brief report? The attorney, it's all yours.
I'll be brief. As usual, the, uh, the litter case. Litter cases, we call them. They're still going through the country court on revolving basis. Two years just passed, man. The new case file. Uh. I mentioned briefly. Some of y'all may be aware, there's litigation filed regarding the election. Uh, that did not name Carter County. Future here as a party. It could affect us eventually, and that shift to be determined. Uh, and I can speak to anybody else individually about that information. Other than that, as usual, written report in the minutes. Happy to help. Do our answer, if there's anybody has. Not or any other time.
Say, thank you, sir.
Madam Chair? Oh, sorry.
That's okay, Eric. Go ahead.
No.
I guess. Go ahead, Donnie.
Madam Chair. I'd like to make a motion. Uh. To extend the contract, the current contract, or renegotiate the current contract that we have with Elizabeth and Carter County Chamber of Commerce. For one year.
Okay. That is a motion. It will require a second before I will let others speak. Is there a second to that motion? Second from Nancy Brown. When the evening that repeated. Yes, please. Donnie, if you will.
You may.
Will you repeat it, please?
Make a motion. Renegotiate the current contract. The county has with Elizabeth and Carter County Chamber of Commerce. For one year.
Okay, the current contract with Elizabeth and Chamber of Commerce. One year.
That was seconded by Nancy Brown. That was seconded by Nancy Brown. So, we're looking for discussion on this specific motion. And those of you who wanted to speak, if it's about something else. Bradley Johnson.
Approved to negotiate. We're going to negotiate.
Eric Fraser.
So, you canned the contract so you could then stonewall on doing the renegotiation?
Well, it's better than a dissertation.
Listen, of all the people in this room. On your intelligence, it would be a terminal suicide.
Oh, boardroom chair, that's unnecessary.
Brad can pull all kinds of stuff and say all kinds of stuff that he wants, but nobody else can, bull.
We're either going to cancel orders.
FMC is responsible for negotiating contracts. FMC should be the ones that does the renegotiation on the contract.
Todd Smith.
I'd like to make a friendly amendment that we also require an ad-mam quarterly report from the.
Donnie, will you accept that amendment?
I'll accept that too, yes.
The amendment is that they report at a minimum quarter. The chamber would be required to report quarter minimum. Excuse me, did you intend that to be to the full commission or to a certain committee?
To the motion made by Mr. Cable. Friendly amendment?
Yes, we know that. The question is, do you want the chamber reporting to the full Board of Commissioners?
Yes.
I think that would be most logical, seeing we are dealing with a huge gap in communication.
When you tell me you're ready, I'm going to move to the next person. Mr. Johnson.
The next question is, is what are they going to report? Is it a quarterly activity at the chamber? Is it a report as far as how negotiation goes with the prices?
How the money's being spent. How the money's being spent with the chamber.
Are we voting to renew the contract for a year, then after that year, renegotiate, or what are we doing?
They do both.
Yeah, you can't do both. We need to renew it.
Then you can't renew.
There's nothing to renew it, just.
Okay, from my understanding, we can't renegotiate something that we don't have. So we, we did not pass the three-year. So now we have a motion on the floor to ask to, if they will accept a year. A year contract. We can't refuse to do it. They, they may do not to do it. You know, I'm just saying, that, that's where we're at. We can't force anything. It's up to them if they want to accept a year contract. So, and the new terms. And it would be, and that would have to be approved by their board because they do have a board.
Mr. Smith?
Uh, I think, my way of looking at it, it's going to answer a couple of questions and a couple of concerns. First of all, it's going to, if they agree to accept, which they may indeed may not. If they do accept, that's going to at least answer the merchant's consideration or, or concerns. That they would not have access to funds after March for the promotion of their businesses and so forth. If we have something in place, at least they will be still be responsible for tourism on that side. If this passes and if they agree, those are two big ifs.
Charlie Thomas.
You, I think addressing what Angie said, we, we can't renegotiate the contract, but we could offer. Offer to. Offer to write a new contract with them. Am I just playing with semantics here?
We're making a proposal.
Can I clarify just a little bit? You all voted not to renew the contract. It's still an effective March nine. It's still an active effective contract. The only thing that was decided tonight is you're going to give them notice, it's not going to be renewed on those same terms. So certainly, you can renegotiate the existing contract up until March nine. And change the terms to that contract. But I just need to know, depending on how this vote goes, what's required of me? Notice wise, I mean, are they going to come back to meet with FMC first and then there's going to be a contract? Or am I just changing uh, these two terms, especially uh, changing it to one year? And requiring the quarterly reports? I mean, am I drafting now with those two changes and sending it to them as a, as a renegotiation? Or are they coming back to the committee first? That's all I need to know.
I think they need to sit down and talk.
So the only thing required of me then, if this vote passes, would be just to provide the notification. Your contract will not be renewed on its existing terms. And then you're voting to FMC. Yeah, I would probably make that formal. On January second.
Madam Chair, do we have the resources to call special meetings? Because our agenda on financial management has already lasted two and a half, three hours on us. You know, per meeting. And then two, you know, we may not meet their date. Or any of the, you know, elected officials that's on the financial management. Because it's hectic to run because, you know, we have the elected officials that's on the financial management. That are fondly involved in the disaster recovery. Uh, that sometimes doesn't afford for them to be able to attend. Special meeting just for that, I would have to have your approval.
I would lend my approval to that because I do think it will be a lengthy meeting. However, I would have a different suggestion. I would suggest that a committee be one, instead of using the financial management committee. I would say take so many people that voted down tonight, so we need to go and get some, make a new committee. Would be my suggestion. That's just a suggestion, I can't do anything.
I mean, we could have it here in the courtroom, they often come, but it's just a toll of being able to cover the committee. Because of its length, we won't be able to do our regular monthly plus this too. If we don't call for a special meeting just for that committee.
Okay, Andrew.
There's other committees that have purview over this sort of thing, joint economic community development board. We can ask them to get involved, also Parks and Rec. There's other committees that it could go through if FMC's agenda is twofold to manage.
Leslie Hughes.
I would like to point out that the FMC is in charge of negotiate, or in charge of contracts. And they're the very ones who brought this forward to have other people come before them. And now they're saying they're too busy to even consider it.
If we're just looking at extending it, changing it to where, or giving them a year and extension to look back at it. Like, we're saying, no, it's not going to be three years, it's going to just be one year. That is the only change that we're looking at. And giving a quarterly report, is that going to be in writing or in person? We need to be clear on that expectation. Obviously, in writing is basically it with how they spend the money. If that is already agreed in here and you have a full body in here. And we're making these motions here. We've got to throw that out there to see if they're even going to accept. Why can't we already agree that if they accept? Can we not form a motion already that if they accept, then that's what we're agreed upon? With going all the way back again, we're not changing the contract. It's the same contract, we're just adding in that we would like some documentation. Would that not be, from my understanding, I'm just going to say my point here. I don't like the fact that again, if I have to preach it like I did for two years. We're being live streamed now, I can look back what happens. But financial management and budget, we all end up voting on this every commission meeting. But I can't ever go back and watch these meetings and we're having to pick up the pieces. And not always, we know before our phones blowing up and our emails blowing up. So I don't know why it can't be that these things could be documented as it happens. So we can look back and hear all this instead of having to pick up the pieces and figure it out. When we're not on that committee. And that's what worries me, if there was so much fireworks that we've heard at these other meetings. If this goes back again, just to that simple. I'm just really worried how it's going to turn out again. Not for ergists, I'm just saying, it's caused a lot of stuff. That we've all dealt with that was not at that meeting. And that irritates me.
Who do you have minutes?
No, the minutes is one little paragraph, this big. And they weren't available until, that I read. The paragraph is this big about, and, and sorry, it was not your turn to speak, Brad. You do that to everybody else, but you speak up. And I get tired of it too.
Well, there you go.
I have the floor.
Are we going to order, Madam Chair?
He, why don't you ever see that ginger port of orders, Brad? I have the floor.
He's still doing it.
Yes. Mr. Johnson, everybody else is calling, per call and allowing me to call on them to speak.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Miss Odom, are you clear?
All I was saying is, when these meetings go on. And they know when they leave that committee, and it's going to be going out, whether it's chamber or anything else. If we start, if you start getting these massive mailouts or emails. It would be nice for a full commission email to be sent out. Hey, tonight in this meeting or whatever, to pre-warn us of what's happened. And I read the minutes, she only has to document the actual facts. But there is about this much space. And we've seen the courtroom tonight, we've seen all the emails, we've had all the phone calls. That, I mean, this is just one of many other things that happened over the last two and a half years. So all I'm asking is, I don't understand why it's a big deal to have all the meetings in here. Why financial management can't meet like all the rest of the committees at six o'clock? Being here and why budget can't be live streamed to where it can be more transparent? So the, so our community don't even question us. That's my opinion.
I do. Todd Smith.
I, I don't think we would have an issue whatsoever finding six people who are generally concerned with this. Instead, volunteer their time to serve on the committee. I know I will.
Are your all those things not working?
No, not hearing, we're just.
Are you?
Turn yourself off, Todd.
Anyone else wish to speak? Julie.
I don't understand why we're overcomplicating it. All parameters of the contract are staying the same with the schedule and the timeline. Why not have attorney hard and do, as he said, do your contract now for one year? With the new, you know, requesting quarterly updates. And then I guess send it to financial management for approval and then to them for approval. I mean, to me, that seems like the easiest thing. Because we're back here because we wanted to change the timeline a little bit. Give them an opportunity to do something, give us an opportunity to find out more about what they do. I thought that was the whole point. So to me, we're just overcomplicating them while we're talking about all these other committees and all these other meetings. When that's what we're paying this man to do. Sorry, I'm, I'm tired, it's been a really long day. Angry.
I would like to, we are correspondents, we put the burden. To us to renew the contract. And do it at least four months before it's due.
What?
They're the one that wants the contract quarterly accounting. They should be responsible for maintaining the contract as far as renewing the contract each year. Think it should be done with at least a four-month lead before the contract expires. They gotta be responsible.
So are you asking for that to be added to the motion as a friendly amendment?
It is possible, yes.
Chair, none of us might care hard enough.
I would like to put the burden on the chamber or the tourism council, whoever it is that we're dealing with. They've come before the commission to renew the contract each year. At least four months before it's due. But we as a commission have an opportunity to act on it.
And I wouldn't have a problem with that going forward, but right now where we sit and where we're at. We need action.
Well, I understand that, but I mean, at two, we want to offer them that one year. Then with that contract, we probably put that in there that they come at the end of that year, four months before the contractors do.
And that's something we can negotiate at that time.
That's what I'm.
Kind of the whole.
Call for a vote, Madam Chair.
We.
Like to move.
I mean, it's technically a motion called a question, it just needs to be voted on in discussion once they say it.
All right, then we have to vote on the call for vote. So for the third time tonight, we're voting to, end discussion.
I didn't even vote this.
I didn't even.
I didn't even, I didn't even change that.
I think that just pops up.
The motion to call for the vote was made by Todd Smith. A vote yes ends the discussion. Is that correct? All right, let's vote. Campbell?
Yes.
My computer's dead.
My computer's dead.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, we move immediately to the motion made by Donnie Cable. Does the chamber make uh, reports? Does anybody need that motion repeated one more time?
Clarification.
Go ahead, Leslie.
Who is doing the negotiation? Or are we just sending back a, like, a one-year contract to their board?
Mr. Althing.
We're not renegotiating, we're just sending a one-year contract to their board, see if they'll approve it. Okay, all right, let's vote the same.
Quarterly report.
And quarterly reports, yes, yes.
Okay, we're voting on that one.
if we say two, one year instead of four, one year?
Sure, yes, if you're amending the current contract to not really extend it for a year anymore, amend it's it's offering one year, most to amend the current contract with offering one-year term and require quarterly reports.
Yeah, that sounds good.
I'll take a one-year term.
I got swollen. That says that they come back and give up.
I was really repaying what's in their names.
We cut him in two, chair.
He says he used to be. Can you show us the whole motion as you have it topped out, please?
At the risk of being stoned, it probably should be Elizabeth and Carter County.
Should be slash Carter County.
I got something to throw.
Can you show us the whole motion as you have it topped out, please?
At the risk of being stoned, it probably should be Elizabeth and Carter County. Should be slash Carter County.
Madam Cable, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. Thank you for that clarification and questions, everybody. Let's vote. Campbell.
Yeah.
You're still?
Yes.
Motion passes. So, Madam Jordan, will you please grab that document and we'll send it over. Stay with you. Are there any other commissioner comments?
Threat of death.
I would like to make one, one note that just happened after the last vote with the commission or for the Chamber of Commerce. I received a fatal threat in the hallway. A man saw his shoulder by the last young lady who spoke, Ms. McCrave, said you will be hearing from me soon.
Madam Chair, I have an amendment to the contract that we have with Shouse that I'd like to bring forward.
Okay, the commission will need to vote on the opportunity to bring that forward tonight because I deny it to be on the agenda.
Correct, it's just amendment to an existing contract that since the amendment to the existing contract of Motorola was allowed on and this was declined, it would be prudent to at least give everybody the opportunity to at least hear what it's about.
You can state what the amendment is about, Mr. Fraser, and I'll let the commission vote.
That's acceptable. The way I'll phrase it, ma'am, is as a motion to suspend the rules just to make sure that we're covered so that so this can be fully addressed. What this is relating to is adding on to the scope of services, plans and policies and procedures for a comprehensive emergency management plan for and the emergency operations plan and implement training, education and homeland security exercises and evaluation, approved tabletop tabletop exercise to test the new plan regarding capabilities of the emergency of the EOC. This includes live onsite trainings and team meetings to provide draft. The county does not currently have a functional comprehensive emergency plan and this is an amendment to the contract to provide training and subject matter experts, senior planners to provide this to the county.
At a cost of what, sir?
Not to exceed $50,000.
Hourly rate, sir.
Senior project manager, subject matter expert and trainer at $150 an hour and the senior planner and trainer at $110 an hour.
All right, so the motion is to amend the rules so that we can vote on that motion. Do we have a second to suspend the rules? Okay, we have a second while Lisa Hughes.
I have copies that I can pass out to everybody.
Let's, let's see how the vote goes. Yes. If they want to hear this fully, consider it, then yes, I think they need that in front of them, Ed. Is there any discussion on the motion to suspend the rules to hear that? Here's Julie.
If there's some reason it has to be done tonight, I consider my reason, I can't wait until next.
Madam Chair.
Here's Carrie.
1998 flood hit, spent 72 hours straight writing emergency operation, emergency management. 2008, when I came back home, come back to work, Mr. Farrar, Mr. Holder asked me to assist emergency management to rewrite it. If it's not been touched, the county mayor's never been briefed, you all have never been briefed by EMA of what our emergency plan is. I asked multiple times during this occurrence, so much so that there was a few people didn't hold me in EOC number. I won't speak on who that is. But if you don't have the capabilities, I'm not going to write it. And you don't have the capabilities in-house to write it. The price, I don't know if it's good or not, but if we don't have that, we're going to have another situation here and it's going to keep us in the millstone and we're going to get ground and we're going to lose and lose. So all I'm saying is, you don't have the capabilities in-house right now to do what you need to do. So, and I'm just speaking because I know what's kind of a little bit of what's going on with that. And last time it was wrote, I had my hands all in it and that was 16 years ago. So that's all I'm going to say.
And just to chime in with Chris, I know it's late tonight and you guys have worked hard on all the decisions, but I want to tell you, when this happened that morning and we activated that EOC, I received no guidance. There was no plan put in place for me, there was no footage for me to go off of, I had nothing, run this county and and take lead. I had to push that EMA director out of the way and I had to run that EOC. And a lot of you don't even realize that happened and I have not left that EOC because it will falter. And that's the truth. That's why I've been so constant, but we have nothing, there's no plan. I have never been taught from the EMA, and this is just a pure honest truth, what the mayor does when the EOC is activated, the mayor of your county learned on her own. I had no guidance. And without Sonia and her team coming in and literally trying to help guide us, I had no guidance and I'm still there. And our EMA director right now is still learning and is having to make some tough decisions right now. But we're, like I said today earlier, we're just literally a teacup of water away from another disaster in this county. We have nothing in place, we have no plans and policies in place.
Madam Chairman, can I also speak one more thing?
Yes, sir.
That plan's supposed to be updated every five years. Theoretically, on the third year, you should start your update to get it in. And like I said, it's been 16 years, guys.
Commissioners, do you all have any other comments?
Did we ever find the old plan? We kept asking and asking, they finally showed up, what, last week? They found the little ones in the middle.
Last week, we found it last week.
Even though I asked and you were there, Mr. Burman, you heard me multiple times. Miss Shouse heard me multiple times, the mayor heard me, Miss Shouse heard me. Where's your plan? This is why we need to go with this. So this is going to have to go.
Okay, so I, I'm just blown away right now with what you're saying, but we have a state EMA and we are paying two EMA people, two EMA workers, who not only are getting paid, but getting paid, I mean, we have that whole discussion with more hours, right? So you're telling me for 16 years, we're behind 16 years? Is that what you just said?
The only one that.
It hasn't been updated?
The only one that could be found was the one that's done 2008 and that's the one that I worked with for, I think it was Johnny Holder or Phil Farrar, want to get whoever was in EMA at that time to get it squared, but.
So I guess my question is, if they're over EMA, why haven't they wondered where our emergency plan is?
I can't answer that question for another one. I'm sorry.
And they're just now, I mean, I'm just saying, why are we just, did they just wait? I mean.
Those are questions we're asking, I'm currently asking right now. We've had some intense meetings over it, but Sonia and her team have offered to help us write this, get the lawful procedures in place, so.
My question is, why can't the state help? We have our EMA, I know their department's there and they need to teach whoever our EMA how to do that, especially if they have to update it every three years. We're not going to have $50,000 every three years to update.
No, what you have, you'll have to get Mr., the gentleman up there will have to get trained on how to properly, I read the manuals, I did it myself in 98, I went back in, I went to the schools on some of the schools, which they're outdated now, they're going to have to get their schooling in. I mean, there's a lot of stuff that needs to be done. It's not just after brush fires, you know what I mean?
But it sounds as if and then.
I'm not trying to throw them under the bus, it's just, we got to have it, guys. If we don't have it, if something else hits, we're so outdated right now, Tima and family can go. Goodbye, Carter County.
I'll yield up for saying, I was just going to say, it's got to be updated every three years. We need to figure out how to do this.
Every five years, it has to be brought before this board.
Okay, and every five, we've got to figure out how to do this announcement.
Can I suggest that I am brain dead and I don't want to think about $50,000? So could I respectfully suggest that we table this or send it to committee where it belongs or?
That's what the vote will say, Dr. Thomas.
Thank you.
I think I'll go with you.
Director Schuber.
I wonder why they got off on the.
Where was, where did you find the emergency plan at the EOC?
I did not find it, it showed up this week or the end of last week.
It was last August, it was in the deputy director's office. There was two or three big ring binders and I spoke with the previous deputy director and that's where it was. So we've got one in play now. I think 2008 does sound an approximate date, but.
Yes.
The latest.
I just saw it again today when I was at my meeting, so.
It should have been.
It's got to be done. Yeah, it's got to be done.
Thank you, sir. I yield, Madam Chair, thank you.
All right, let's vote on suspension of the rules. A yes vote suspends the rules so that we can hear the motion. Campbell.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Motion passes.
And it takes two terms.
Take two terms.
It's been a play.
Is there anything else that the commissioner comments?
I'll just add, if anybody knows any families in need, our big deal is Saturday from 11 to four, the National Armory. And we have Santa landing at noon to buy helicopter and we have toys and stuff for the entire family. So just send to family.
Please, children.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right, what's open for motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn by Cherry Crawford and for.
Why is she Jerry all the way in the morning? Why is she Jerry? Why?